Driving down with all the skiers. It's all sunset on that side, so it feels like I'm testifying. I always like things that. So we've got. Slightly revised. They're coming down. Exactly. Yep. And I've got it over there that year. So my intention for tonight's meeting. Is to have my mission to give you a little feedback on their observations from last night's meeting. Desire changes and tweaks. Once we get the maps firmed up as well as we came tonight. Just not a sneak in map. Let's take this time, two, three hours. Going through. Rest of the transportation, rest of the planes. These are the types of things. I know I've got a few of those already kind of set up for. Community character and the landers. Some hot thoughts out.
Is it not audible unless we're right here? Okay. And it's feeding into Zoom. Okay. So anyone who talks, we got to pass this mic around. Do we have it? We've got a mobile mic somewhere, don't we? Upstairs, upstairs, under the counter in the main office where we've got the, the mobile speaker. We've got a microphone and a cord in there. Would you mind grabbing that? Sorry, folks online, we're getting started a little late and rusty. Okay. So we've got maps coming down. So why don't we jump into some of the texts? Do you feel like that's okay? Or did you want to go over notes first and observations from last night? Let's do that. I've got some as well.
Are you serious? I thought we were done. I kept thinking we're done, but then.
Oh, now that she's gone.
Is he in Plancy or is he in one of the other operated islands?
I think he just wanted to escape the city. I don't think.
It's.
Quality of life has definitely improved.
Many more, many as possible. I'd like to see this place filled and as, you know, as many as we have license for it on, on Zoom. We knew that that probably wasn't going to happen.
Oh, I guess Marta left. You're not running the chins.
But, but it kind of made it a little bit difficult for me to, to get a good, you know, a good handle on, on what. And specifically even more up in New Orleans with, with no one showing any interest in that. We're west of the mountains.
I don't want that. Cause I want, I want the value going in the whole. To take all the plans.
Who's the constable? Who's the constable? Free value purposes. What is picking up here?
And it said.
Well, they're looking at our 10 and it drove the price up significantly for that property. We're developing at anything less deaths was very difficult.
Right.
And so I would like to see the plan. Not, I just don't think as planning commissioners, we would have any ability to get what we want if we say from the beginning, oh, you have a right to our 10.
Right.
And but if we say we're planning on third acre lots and then have a provision that says you may receive higher density. Based on the discretion of the planning commission and the assets you bring to the community and leave it, leave it there. I just get really nervous when at the beginning, there's this expectation and then we're stuck.
So property rights is an interesting, interesting thing. Thank you so much, June. Appreciate that.
Last duck is the big printer kicked in last minute, so I just brought it.
No worries. We'll.
Sorry.
I'll figure it out. So let's, yeah, talk about property rights and let's talk about land values. There's, there is. There's a, there's a sense, boy, where do we even start from? There's a sense amongst a lot of the community and I don't know what you guys learned in elementary school through high school or what I learned from elementary school through high school about land rights, about how land rights are, are given. But the, let's just kind of set out the, the reality of the, the situation. Property rights, just imagine a bundle of sticks. Have you guys heard this analogy before? Okay. It's a bundle of sticks. When you buy a piece of property, you buy that bundle of sticks and every single one of those sticks represents a different right. Your right to build a home, your right to farm, your right to quiet and peaceful enjoyment. That's one of your most important constitutionally protected rights. You're quiet and peaceful enjoyment. And that right when somebody runs afoul of quiet and peaceful enjoyment of your property, that constitutes a nuisance. And prior to the implementation and the Supreme Court support of zoning, that right to quiet and peaceful enjoyment, when somebody violated that, you would take them to court. So if Wayne lives next door and he loved to listen to rap music really loud over the fence. And I'd be prior to zoning being put in place and being validated by the Supreme Court. I would have taken Wayne to court saying he is robbing, robbing me of my constitutional right to quite peaceful enjoyment to my property. All the other rights that come in this bundle of sticks, they are created under the constitution. They are created under the United States. Rules and they're created under the rules of the state of Utah and under the rules of state of Utah, the county can create zoning, right? And zoning can say what you can and cannot do on your property. So someone who comes to you and says, I've got an unlimited and unfettered right to do what I want to do on my property. It's misinformed. It would be wonderful if we all had the ability to do that. Honestly, if, if we all lived in isolation and our properties weren't physically and literally tied to each other by the earth. And the air and the sound around us, it'd be wonderful if, if that's exactly how it works, but unfortunately it's not. So land rights are this bundle of sticks that run with property. When you buy a piece of property in an agricultural zone, the county could have a zone that says, this is only agriculture. You cannot have any residential here, but that is legal to do. Not palatable. Most of us would say if we're going to have agriculture, we want to be able to live somewhere near our farm, but that is legal for the county to do. And if the county created a law like that, which we actually have created a law like that for the open space of cluster subdivisions, you cannot build on that open space. It is only valuable as barn property or as a park. We have devalued the value of that property, right? And so anytime we're adding rights to a property or taking rights away from a property or potentially affecting the value of that property. The only thing the Supreme Court has told us when it comes to value of property is you can't make it zero. And so if you were to say the open space zone means you could do nothing on your property, develop absolutely nothing anywhere. Therefore there is no value to your property. If we were to create a zone like that and apply it to somebody's property, they could sue us for constitutional takings. It's regulatory take. But so long as we allow even one bundle of sticks to run with, or one stick to run with that property that makes it valuable. And Supreme Court valuable for $10 is probably a taking valuable for a thousand dollars probably is not a taking. And so, I mean, each of those are kind of weighed on a case by case basis. So as we look at creating new plans that will result in new zoning, what does somebody have a right to? They have a right to what they have on their property right now. The county commission has the right to go and rezone that property right now. They just can't rezone it to a zone that is so valueless that it takes the property essentially. And so there's the, there's the political ideology behind land rights. And then there's the legal reality of land rights. We're talking about two different things. And I'm not saying either of them is wrong, but we've got to work with the, the legal reality of it while being respectful of the idea. Like, let's make sure that we're not creating zones that, that make property value less, right? But at the same time, we're gonna, an unintended side effect, a casualty of zoning, we're going to make some property more valuable. And we're going to make other property not quite as valuable. With what I have on these maps right here, I think everybody's property values are going to go up.
Yeah.
It's just, no doubt, one house on one acre versus three houses on one acre. You can sell a third of an acre, a little bit more than, you could sell three thirds of an acre, a little bit more than you could sell one, one acre. It's just the way that works, right? And so I think across the board, if somebody comes and says you're devaluing the property, I think we, you know, let's say, that's not really what we're doing. We're probably making it so you're going to have to pay more in taxes. But we're probably not devaluing your property. But, but I. That's true. When you're on fixed income, there, there is something to be upset about when that happens.
But I, but I think to Commissioner Wickham's original thought there, I think that's pretty much what we've covered is putting everything in thirds. But if, if the improvements are made, sewer services are, you know, are, are installed and everything is, then, then there will be granted a little bit higher density.
We had sewer be listed on there though.
That's a given.
You gotta have sewer to go to third, but we want the amenities.
Right. But I thought, but I thought, I thought that's where we were going with a percentage of.
You can't, you can't get the, the third acre without sewer. But yeah, if you do, you could do quarter acres if you got a little bit more than two sewer.
I was talking in general terms sewer, but I'm, you know, I, I just meant, you know, the improvements have to be there and, and, and part of that improvement, I thought that we had, had come to some conclusion. Not specific yet, but as a percentage of, of the development that would go to the parks.
Right. Yeah. Percentage going to the parks district or if it was higher density, but those homes had to be a certain square footage limit. So you're not building massive homes on little lots that only people from California want to buy.
Right.
You're building something that someone can actually afford. So kind of forcing them into that gap in the market where we actually need homes. That, that's where I think would we'd be the best serving for those smaller lots.
So something we could do in that front and I'm going to start taking notes here. So I'm going to, just for everyone to know, I'm sharing my screen.
Yeah. If you don't dictate that, then.
It's better than looking at each other.
No, but I knew, I wish.
I'm sorry, guys. I thought it'd be a little bit easier to deal down here than.
It is, Charles. No, this is better.
You're, you're fine.
We can actually see a map and.
Hey, Marta, would you mind if we still, well, you know, that is.
It's fine.
Sure. Okay. As far as the maps go, you'll be able to have them right in front of you and I'll type and I'll read to you what I'm typing out of that. Okay. So let's hit, this is going to be a land use concern and, and one way to help regulate massive homes showing up on smaller lots is to have.
Okay. And some scenarios, but it's just not meeting the, the niche we need right now for housing. So it's not as beneficial to the community.
So I would say that a third acre lot, you're going to have, be hard pressed in the market we have now to see affordability.
Right.
I, I still think we're looking at pretty large homes on thirty acre lots, but.
The lot average that you have.
Yeah.
Third.
That's right.
Some of their five thousand square feet.
That's right. Or, or even getting into the mixed use residential where you can have smaller lots with smaller homes on them. That could still be single family. And so one way that other communities address this and our code does not is we put a coverage regulation. You cannot cover more than X amount of your lot with buildings. And so that kind of limits, I mean, most of the time it's still quite a bit of space, especially if you're on a third acre. We, what I see across the board is usually about 25% and it get that, that number gets smaller as the lot sizes generally get smaller. But if we're talking about a 6,000 square foot lot, you're still talking about about 25%. Don't cover any more than that of your property. Is that something you guys would like to see in our codes?
I get nervous about, I, I get nervous about blanket stating that, but I think if it was a negotiating tool.
Okay.
I, I don't know what, how do you feel?
Well, first of all, on lot averaging, I, I would, I don't want to see that big of a swing from one acre or, or maybe two acres down to 5,000 square feet without a master development plan.
Oh, I see. I see.
Yeah. So that, that's, that's, that's kind of.
Always have to come with an HOA. There, it seems that there's a huge HOA diversion out here that people do not want to see in HOA. They, they'd like to have a 5,000 square foot lot with a small house that they own and no one has control of. I'm not, I like HOAs. I'm not opposed to them, but I, I think there's going to be a high demand for those smaller homes on.
I like them too, if they would work.
I've been in really good ones.
And, and.
But I was the president.
I hated my HOA because I was the president. It was fine before I was a part of the presidency. And then when people are calling all the time, it was terrible.
So I think where we're going with this, cause I agree with Andrew, I don't want to see any terrible, I don't want this blanket statement. If they want to go anything smaller than a third acre size, it needs to be a part of them master plan development.
Smaller than a third master plan or smaller than quarters.
Smaller than a third.
And that includes with lot averaging.
Yes.
Okay.
Because then, then we're given, I mean, we're thirds, a pretty small lot as it is, but then if they're going to go that next step further, then we're that much smaller yard sizes, everything else. So what are we giving back to the, to the community or those people in general?
Right.
To, to have the, you know, is there going to be just a little pocket park somewhere for them kids to go play or something like that? Because on a quarter acre lot, even if you put a restriction on how much, you know, rooftop or hard surface there can be on it, you still, there's no one for.
But, 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 and I also, as we, as we go through that process and talk about the parks, though, they need to be something substantial. I, I, I think that, that what we've talked about in, in cluster subdivisions, in the smaller cluster subdivisions. Yeah. If there's, if there's a small place to go, to go and hang out for a little, you know, for a little bit, great, fine. That's, that's good. But it's, it's, they're normally not big enough to have a ball game going on.
No.
And someone to, you know, and some other activities that might be going on. So that's why, you know, I, I look at this pushing, pushing that percentage out to the parks district. So that some nice larger parks can be created and, and more of them than, than what we have.
As long as it's in a vicinity. Such a walking distance and part of maybe that is, cause Roger brought up a good point last night. I mean, if we're going to go smaller, five percent is not going to work. It's not going to cover. That five percent's got to go up. It, you know, and maybe if you stay at thirds, you know, that's okay. But when you hit that quarter or, or that makes use, then that's when you gotta go to maybe 10%. And it doesn't have to be, I agree with you because we don't want all these little teeny pocket parks or neighborhood parks.
Honestly, for raising young families, having them really close in the communities, they've done them. Where did I see the la, the last one? Oh. Saratoga Springs has a lot of them and the pocket parks are much better maintained. A lot of the homes from the areas I've been in.
But I agree.
But when you think about scale, so there's, when you're talking younger children, those post parks are really valuable and it, and it creates a sense of community for a small group. Once you get to a big park, there's not as much of a community attachment because it's too many people. So a balance, definitely a balance, but I wouldn't ride out completely the, the smaller ones, I guess. Yeah. Maybe find something happy in the middle, but.
But I, I don't think necessarily that we at the planning commission please that either because we're, at the end of the day, we don't have to maintain it. They're going to get it to the parks district.
You're right. They should decide.
Say, okay, there, parks districts in the process of doing a master plan right now for that area as it is. Let, let's kind of see what their master plan shows and what their master plan.
And they can tell us what will work. I agree.
And, and then we kind of work from that because the, I agree, those smaller pocket parks, they are more user friendly and some of them smaller neighborhoods. I agree with Andrew. We need some larger scale. And you know, different things like that. But if you have a whole bunch of pocket parks.
And land.
Costs, you know, to maintain. And you know, the, right now the parks district doesn't have the biggest budget. And I mean, you could blow that in a hurry trying to just hire someone to go around and empty garbages at all these different places.
I, I, I think that what we've got to remember right now is this is Bieber County. This isn't a municipality. And so that, what you're talking about in my mind plays more to a city.
But that's what we're creating though, is the beginnings.
We are.
Yeah.
We are. I agree with that. And, and, but at the same time, then, then to what Bren was saying, then, then I think that we, we're, you know, then that becomes a parks district. Kind of, well, decision, but, but they should have a future. They should have a vision of what, what it's going to be.
Yeah.
And I think if we just set that percentage.
They'll find the places.
Then the parks district, you know, that developer go to the parks district and say, look, this is what I've got. This is the percentage I have to put in parks. Would you prefer me put something here? Or can I take this money that I would have put to that, pay into a bank to them to now put that somewhere.
Bigger facility.
Right.
Facility. We have more flexibility in the parks district. I, I like that.
Yeah.
Oh, we have a.
You're talking, you know, you're trying to make it a city. But have you given any thought to town hall, city building, you know, area that the fires of?
Yeah. That's a good point.
Any of that.
Yeah. It, it's a good point, but does, does that plan, I mean, I get the parks, they, they've got to be planned in. But when a city becomes a city, you don't know what those borders are going to be. So is, is it possible to put that in? And, and know what it is. No, I'm glad you brought it up. Thank you.
Absolutely.
So. Look at the water district. I mean, for years they operated at least space out of the gas station there and operated out of there until they, whether it's the funding, they needed to get to build it, buy the place. And, and I think it, my opinion on that is, is let the city choose at the time. I mean, we're not going to say there's no ground available for them, but let them decide where they want their city center to be. And, and then they can go purchase that part.
Vision, you know, a city, a plain city, whatever, you have this area where the offices are.
Yeah.
And built out around.
And hopefully that would happen somewhere close to a park, you know, or something like that. And so.
But I think, but I think to the point, you're, you're thinking what I was trying to say and it probably didn't come out very well. It's, it's kind of hard to determine that until that, that city's there. until that, that city's there. Not that it's not a good point, it's a great point, but it kind of, it kind of seems like to me that you almost have to know.
It's just like we talked about with the parks district. Let's not make decisions for the parks district. When that city comes along, let them make their own decisions and.
Yeah.
So something I have above the screen right now is it's a street regulating plan that is adopted um, in the code for the Eden area. And uh, the street regulating plan, it's similar to zoning. We just, you flip the colors. The colors aren't applied to the land. They're applied to the streets. And then based on what colors those streets are, that tells you what kind of buildings can go along those streets. The color uh, blue that you see right in here, um, that is called uh, government air and institutional. Now, it doesn't mean that only government institutional buildings can be located there. There's a whole host of buildings that we say is allowed along government institutional streets. But we're saying that if you're going to do a government or institutional building, a school, a city hall or a, a recreation complex, something like that, it would be along one of these streets. And so we could certainly paint that on a map if you guys wanted to see it on a map. Or we could say, you know what, maybe the city needs to figure that out when it becomes a city.
I think we're a little too far out to get that specific just because we got to see how it builds out. So maybe this is the next iteration.
Good. And we could do that. So remember, one of the first uh, strategies of our community character uh, element is to uh, go back and look at small community plans. So we look at, we're looking things at a macro right now. Um, it'll come back at each of these areas and say, okay, if this becomes a city, maybe that's, and that's actually what this is. This is the Eden, small, small Eden area plan. If Eden becomes a city, this is where their.
Yeah.
So we, everyone in this room, probably everyone on the, on the computer, we love our space, right? We like, our ideas are big lots. However, we're experiencing with calling this growth is people coming in from other states, is young people. You know, these are all homeowners. Well, the market actually is telling us a different desire in homeownership is changing. And that the market is, is doing that on its own. So you're, we're finding out that a lot of these young homeowners and a lot of these people coming from other states, they don't want to take every yard. They don't want to have a third acre yard that they care of. They don't want to be married to it. Like, we all love our yards and we all have nice, you know, we like to keep nice. But the market is telling us something else that, that, that's not what the desire is becoming anymore. So what's causing the growth, what's causing the need of these homes is uh, that market is showing us a different desire for a different type of home. I think that's important to understand as well. Um, also the cost, you know, cost of paying for itself and things like that. You're putting in roads and everything. That the more homes there, the easier it's to maintain. You don't want a situation like Syracuse, who they wanted to keep it rural, so they did all these half acre lots.
It's a lot of ass.
Anything goes wrong, it's a, it's a financial disaster for them because they, they're already underwater with the homes on the half acre lots. And so thinking of a future city, they, it can't maintain itself. And so just uh, I know we love our lots and we're thinking of doing that a service to whoever might be doing third acre lots, but in all reality, the market will dictate what the demand is. And the, right now, the market is telling us that people are wanting smaller because we want, they want to go. They want to go away for the weekend. They want to go do things. We're getting out more than ever before. And yard, taking care of yards plus the water situation, we brought up how important water is. And it's a lot easier to maintain with trip and zero scapeing. You do not want to zero scape. It's a week, that, that becomes a weeknight, right? The, so smaller lots, we're, you're going to find out as, as next few years. That is the demand.
And, and I think that is, we, I think totally are on board with that. Our concern is giving, is laying an expectation that any developer can come in and get that high of density without providing the surfaces that go with that density.
It's really important. So in those community plans, you do have, you have small lots, you have medium sized lots and large lots. What that does is, when you love where you live, if you do it right, you love where you live. Little hall, right? And it's a little, it's a nice neighborhood, but it has a great park, has a gym, has a pool, has these great amenities that I love where I live. I have a few kids. If you get your house, I want to move right down the road in my same neighborhood. And that's what we.
And that's the vision that I think all of us like. We just want to make sure that someone doesn't come in and build high density with no amenities. And so the third acre, the third acre is more of the expectation if you're not providing the amenities.
Right.
And gives some, it gives us the, the power to say, okay, you can get more density, but you've got to provide amenities that go with it. So I, I'm hoping we get the master plans coming in. I'm hoping we get those. Cause you're right on, we need those communities.
All right. So let's talk just a little bit about that. And I've got that at the top of my list. Um, lot averaging with lots under thirty acre must be part of a master plan. Uh, it works really well when you got big projects.
Right.
But we've got people wanting to do lot averaging with three or four lots.
I think we need to put an acre requirement on it, you know, a total acreage of a subdivision size requirement on it before they can come in and do that. So you don't run.
We already have that in the prod.
We, we do have that in the MPD overlay zone. Um, and, and we can do that. So what that means is that you're only going to get third acre lots. Okay, so thinking about how much uh, of the properties have been divided down into smaller and smaller parcels, right?
Yeah.
The majority of what we see in our office are small subdivisions. Um, it's rare that we get a big subdivision that comes to you guys. The ones that you guys see, you don't see the small ones because they just get approved administratively in our office. Um, one every other week. Um, it would, well, often, one every other week. Ones that I'm not even aware are going on. Actually, I just barely saw my lucky sign today. I had no idea it was even a thing. Um, and that's four or less. The commissioners want us to change that to nine or less. And so when we see that, uh, we could have an opportunity for someone to come in and say, I want to do a lot averaging. And I want to get smaller lots for my kids up front and I want the flag lot in the back, or I want the, the three acre lot in the back or something like that. Um, that still gives a landlord the chance to divide the land up for the kids. Um, and still keep a, a little bit of a chunk. And that's
Actually not opposed to the big and small lots mixed together just because that's you went to Highlands. You've got a fa- five acre plot next to a quarter acre lot. Well, I don't think we have the, yeah, in some of our areas, we do have that. Some that are small, a quarter. So I, I don't, I know it's, it seems crazy because we don't see it a lot, but I, I don't really see the disadvantage to having even an extreme across the street. Um, I don't know, what would be the disadvantage?
Is traffic. So when you start getting smaller, you want to keep your, you don't want, if you're in a bigger lot, you don't want to have a million cars going by. And you control that with traffic by how you, how you position those lots inside of the city. If you want to keep the higher traffic towards your main arteries. So you don't have.
No, that's, that's great.
Yeah, traffic would be an issue.
So what if, what if we tier it? Um, so instead of saying anything less than a third acre um, has to be part of a twenty acre development, twenty acre master planner or greater. What if we were to say something like, um, you could get, I think what we talked about when, when Jed was here a couple of meetings ago is um, you can get fifty percent of that, up to fifty percent of that if you do a lot of averaging. I mean, we could say that we could say maybe that's the blanket rule. But if you want to do anything smaller than fifty percent or let's back up a little bit. Maybe we could say you could do seventy-five percent of that uh, in, in your lot size. And that's your blanket rule. Anything smaller than that, um, you need to have twenty acres and uh, do a master plan development. Or some kind of a tiered approach like that. So you can go smaller. Um, the question for, I have for you guys is how small is too small in the third acre, quarter acre, third acre zone, whatever we're going to decide that is?
A lot averaging allows you to go to half that.
So right now in the Utah Highland zones, majority of the Utah Highland zones, lot averaging allows you to put eighty percent of that. What we discussed two meetings ago was half that.
Yeah.
And so maybe half that is only with a master plan development that, that has at least ten acres involved in it or something that will, I mean, any persuasion on that, any?
I think it depends on what the development's going to be. Because if you get, if you get a, if you get someone that comes in and wants to do a patio home type situation, you're going to have small lots. I don't know. What are those? What are the size of those lots?
And in, in JDC, we were looking at six thousand.
So they're, so they're small. And, and so now you would expect either, you, you'd expect some sort of a plan for that. I don't know if it's, if it, if it demands a, a master plan, but it certainly comes close to some sort of.
The painsville, you mean, or the new one?
Where they tore the old school down.
Oh, oh, uh, I don't know. We can find out.
A really nice development out of that.
But the people don't own any of the ground. The only ground that those people own is where their house sits. Everything else belongs to them.
Yeah, my mom lives in HOA like that and it's fantastic.
And it turned out really good. That was a great subdivision.
If it's professionally managed where you can call the management company to uh, uh, take care of your problems as opposed to the neighbor.
For that one, I mean, that's a smaller lot that.
Because you could have five acres, you could do a subdivision. And you could end up with, you know, X amount of housing. You know.
Five acres there.
Yeah. And so it's, it's, it's like, yeah.
Let's think about that for a second. Maybe address could be.
Is that Kent's?
Yes.
That's the high school?
Yes. So now just go straight north.
North? Here? Thirty-six hundred west, right? Is that the high school? No, no, high schools over here. Forty-one, got it. That far north?
I haven't been there for five years. Twenty-five seventy-five.
Yeah, twenty-five and forty-one hundred approximately.
Thank you. Rick is ordering me one.
And forty-three fifty. Well, and the whole point is. One point three three acres is what the HOA owns. Yeah, one point three three.
Is that it right there for your?
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, right there.
So how many homes?
Right?
You filled them all?
And, and what was the overall acreage?
The HOA owns one point three. Each, each one of these are point oh seven. So we're probably talking two and a half, three acres.
Yeah. So, so.
And it's a super nice little.
And there's nice common.
Really good.
And that's what I say. So that's where that, that stepping, you know, because you might, you might end up with something like that.
Yeah.
You know, I'm almost ready to buy one now. And see, and that, that's what it goes to.
Right.
Talking about the market, it's, it's young people, granted, but it's also guys that are getting tired of taking care of that lawn and want to do something different. They've enjoyed their house and their yard with their family, but it's time to get something smaller. So that you can do something different.
Right.
And, and I mean, look at, look at what patio home market is around here. You can't, they can't build them fast enough.
Yep. It's one of the missing middles. Uh, it's certainly something that should be considered.
So, so to your point of, of how to do that on a small subdivision, that could be a small subdivision.
Yeah.
Someone with, with a few acres of ground that wants to subdivide it into that.
But if they did that, my contention would be either they have to donate land or money to get that density. And so you've got one acre and you want to pile the homes in that tight. Well, you're going to have to come up with a chunk of cha- chunk of change to donate to the city, or I don't know if they'd have enough, if it would make sense to donate land.
Well, I don't, I don't.
Over the head that hard. And that was three acres on that site and you had twenty-one homes.
Yeah, so they're making a lot more money, like.
Well, you've got, so you're, you're seven homes per acre now instead of three.
Wait, I thought we saw that was one point three acres. No, it's.
Well, it's one point three that the HOA owns, but then when you figure the road and the little home plot.
Take the homes out.
So it's like two.
Seven homes per acre on the twenty-one if it was three acres. If it was a third acre subdivision, they would get nine homes. Right? Instead of the twenty-one for the three acres.
And realistically, the only road that's inside that subdivision is.
It's private.
Private.
And it's not that light.
Yeah.
No, and everything else was already an existing road. So that didn't cost them to be anymore.
Exactly. So that, that's kind of my point. And a lot of those, a lot of those are.
So as long as they're private, but then that, then we're looking at, we're not giving a zoning change. They have to be an HOA. They have to be a PRUD. So what's the size of land that's okay to do an HOA or a PRUD?
Why do we put a cap on it? Let them bring us a concept.
Exactly.
If they, if, I mean, because this right here, three acres pulled it off. I'm not saying it's going to happen on everyone.
Every time.
And I'm not saying that we grant everyone. But if they can put together a plan.
I'm trying to think, is it three acres?
Under PRUD?
You can do an overlay under a certain.
Uh, I think it's ten, it may be four in certain zones, but I think it's a minimum ten in most.
Cities that's smaller, I'm trying to remember what.
I, what this gentleman wanted.
I just want to make a comment about, you keep talking about, uh, how does a developer pay a bunch of money to apply for a park? If it's a smaller piece. And I wonder if that could just be something where you could do a building permit. I mean, that could be something that uh, homeowner can pay a building permit.
Impact fee.
To work a park.
Well, they're going to have to pay an impact fee anyways.
What's that?
They're going to have to pay an impact fee when they apply for building permits anyways, because the parks district will have that. But for the developer to get a bonus.
Double dip now to get the park money. You're, you're trying to, you're trying to punish the developer to get higher densities. And then you're still going to do a park. Um, when they do the building permit as well.
But when you look at this one, so if this one in particular, you would have got nine lots off there. Now you got twenty-one. So you've got twelve extra lots that you're going to sell and make twelve extra, the, the money off the twelve lots.
And the city is paying for that many more residents on that land. And so we need to recoup some of the developers' costs, not the homeowners' costs at that point.
And now you've got these little teeny areas. Where are the kids going to go? Where are the, you know?
These are all senior citizens or fifty.
This one wasn't using, yeah.
They won't be. I, I lived in an HOA when my kids were little for like five, six years. Yeah.
My grandma loved.
Just because they're old people, fifty-five and up, they still go walk trails and.
Drive cars. Yeah, they use everything.
So to, to the point, um, though, you've got your impact fees and then you've got the, the dedication. So your impact fees are for um, system wide improvements. You're looking at your regional parks, you're looking at your master plan parks. In order to charge an impact fee, you have to have an impact fee facilities plan and create an impact fee analysis. Part of your impact fee analysis determines what amount of square foot of park space or acreage of park space per person is a reasonable level of service. And there's actually a lot of subjectivity on a, a, on a, on a legislative basis for the county or a city to determine what park space is good for us. How crowded can our parks get before it becomes unusable?
Then you got to have that existing level of service.
That's right.
And some people are buying into existing capacities. And then some, you know, you've got to help build that new capacity.
Exactly right. It's the same thing with trails. How many linear feet of trail is needed for a trail to actually still be usable? Now, capacity on these kind of analysis is a little bit different than the capacity of a, of a sewer pipe, right? Capacity of sewer pipe, you know exactly how much can flow through that sewer pipe. Because I mean, it's a volume, uh, calculation of volume and flow. Um, whereas on a trail, it's about experience, right? It's like Roger mentioned, it's the, it's the uh, mental and physical well-being of the community. And if you are constantly riding your brakes on your mountain bike because you're behind horses or, or runners or whatever, it's, it's overburdened, right? Then again, if you never see another human being while you're on that trail. I was just saying, maybe you could add one or two more people there. But yeah, uh, that's actually something we did when we did our trails, impact fee. Uh, we don't have a park impact fee, but we did that for trails. We said, what is a reasonable amount? What do we currently have? How many people do we have using that? What is the level of service of that right now? And is that level of service reasonable to say we're good at that level of service and we're going to continue to add this same amount of lane or excuse me, trail feet per person? And then we were able to say, all right, per person, three point three, three point two people per household. Now we know on a household basis how much, how much of a certain type of trail is supposed to go in. We know the, the value of that certain type of trail is supposed to be. Therefore, when you pull your building permit, you need to pay that amount. And then the county commission said, and then we're going to cut that in half because if we actually took that number of, for trails, for streets, for storm drain, what else do we have? We got three or four more. Um, it would have been like twenty or thirty thousand dollars a home. And I think we're looking at five or eight thousand a home at this point. Okay.
Well, well, I, I, I didn't mean to get us stuck in minutia with this.
No, it's, I, I, I put a bullet point here because if we look at this from an impact fee analysis perspective, how many square feet or how many acres per person or per home should we be looking at? So instead of just saying, um, you've got twenty acres, five percent into park space. Well, maybe it's on a per dwelling unit basis instead of on a per acreage basis. And I think that'll speak right to what Roger's talking about. So, and then, sorry, one more thing to, to point out about the difference between impact fees and exaction and why this is not a double dip. Impact fees is going to the system where exaction is going to the project. So you, your, your exaction is a project um, oriented cost. So let's just give an example of streets. Uh, if your project is creating that intersection down the road to become overburdened, even though every single homeowner inside of that, that subdivision is going to be paying an impact fee. even though every single homeowner inside of that that subdivision is gonna be paying an impact fee when they pull a building permit, that developer needs to go fix that intersection first. Uh, because the the homeowners who are paying impact fees, some of it might go towards that street or that intersection, but it's also gonna go to the intersection on the other side of town. So they're paying into the system as a whole, whereas the developer, that's right, the developer is paying into the project itself. So that's the difference there, and that's state code specifies the difference between a a project uh cost and a system cost.
And 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 that leads right to the point where I said we don't wanna beat them over the head, because what ends up happening is that just gets added to the cost of the home, so then we make the homes that much more unaffordable.
Or.
We just have to find a balance, yeah.
Or less affordable to the, to the fact, they're still gonna go on market rates, right? They're still gonna go on comparables. And so it's eating to the profit margin of that developer. And and to be real, developers need to have a profit margin in order to provide the housing.
Yeah, or there won't be, there won't be any development. That's that's the whole point. So so one drives the other, and and it all drives the price up.
Right.
Ultimately, right, so.
But it's either you have the space in your lot, or you have the space in a park. I mean, the space is either the way.
I, and I wouldn't say it's neither or, but.
I would rather see the smaller lots that have the parks in the open space than a bunch of, you know, like John said, a bunch of unmaintained.
Right.
You know, zero scapeing or something like that.
You get a greater sense of community when the kids can go right out in the backyard, open the gates, and go to the swing set that all the other kids are playing on as opposed to uh go right out in the backyard and play on the swing set.
Play by themselves in their own.
Right.
No, I agree with that a hundred percent.
Okay, so let me see if I can make some sense of uh where we are here.
Good luck.
Okay, so lot averaging, where we were up until this meeting was, you can cut your lots up to fifty percent. Um, and that could just be a a essentially a buy right uh thing. Now, the plan itself would say that, but none of that becomes reality unless we go into the code and make it say that. Do we want to adjust that to a different threshold then? There's, there's no limitation on how big it can be, how little it can be in terms of uh overall acreage of that development. Um, but it it essentially, we would make it a buy right, so.
So it would have to be an HOA if it's that small.
Not necessarily. If you do a lot of averaging and you do uh eighth acre lots, and then one really big one, there is nothing for the HOA to manage unless you've got open space or common stuff for them.
So what's about, the transportation issue i- is important with that kind of project. So how do we deal with that? Cause tha- that is hard if you're across the street and all of a sudden you've got five homes across the street from your one house, and this roads weren't anticipating that. I mean, when you go into an HOA or you go into a planned community, those roads can kind of.
You get from HOAs, you could have a smaller road, cause if they're gonna keep it in a county road, they're gonna have to meet the sixty six requirement.
Bigger, yeah.
The road's gotta stay bigger.
They probably are just naturally going to.
But if you go to the HOA, then you might get a thirty six foot, you know, road and no parking or restriction.
Won't get as many through streets, though. We still have to make sure we get through streets.
You guys, you guys can write this plan yourselves. You guys are doing great. It's it's great that I don't even have to explain most of this stuff. Awesome.
Yeah.
But if you've got a big enough development that you that you're requiring through streets, you're gonna have sixty, yeah, well, you're gonna have a mass fund, but you're gonna have large roads going through. So everything's, everything kind of takes care of itself, so to speak. So so kind of where you're going, I like it because what it does is it forces a concept. So if someone wants to do a small development or a large development, they can bring it in and 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 it can be observed, you know, it can be looked at and and kind of kicked around and and maybe it's better that way so that everybody has the input up front rather than coming in with a, you know, a design and a set of plans. I don't know, is that, is, am I understanding kind of where you were going with that?
No, that is exactly what I was thinking when it comes to doing anything other than third acre lots.
Right.
If you can do third acre lots, we've got our minimum connectivity threshold, we've got our minimum park threshold, we've got our minimum trail threshold, which we'll have to write those into the code, cause we only do that right now in our cluster subdivisions. We'll just need to make sure it's clear across the board what those requirements are. And and then by rights, you would essentially get your your third acre um uh development. However, that rezone has to happen first, right? And so you still could say no when they come into rezone.
Right, but.
I think that's where that.
Only have some options when they come in. When you zone and it matches.
What are they drawn up before we grant them that right to re- to to rezone?
I agree. Okay, so that's, that's the, that's actually the thing that was batting around in my head just now. So would you rather see every rezone be based on a concept?
Yes.
Okay, which means that every rezone is gonna need to be implemented through contract. It's good, uh, it it's gonna need to.
Every rezone should have a development agreement.
I'm gonna call it conditional.
I mean.
And last, at the third acre.
I'm sure that there's gonna be circumstances.
No, I mean, even a third would have to, right now, just because the, just cause that map's all yellow and says they can do it.
Okay.
They gotta still bring it in and ask for a rezone.
Oh, they always do, okay.
To zone it to that third acre or that medium, whatever.
Okay.
Okay, if we do zoning development agreements based on concept plans, we're gonna want them to be super, super simple, cause if every single subdivision has a unique development agreement with unique standards and stuff like that, uh, our office is, our office is gonna be crazy. We're gonna have to hire twenty more people.
Yeah, ready to go for these, for this ones. And then the only plug and plays are, is okay.
We're on the same.
If it's gonna go to an HOA or something, or or a lot average, then maybe the roads get a little bit looked at differently, or the parks, or depending on the size of it.
And yeah, if it's big, you know, those can have their own things, cause they're bringing something new to the community. So let's, I I wanted to make sure some of the else was clear, and I think it is clear for you guys. Uh, but just to to reaffirm that I know that you know, when a developer comes in and brings a bunch more homes, they're bringing a bunch of potential dollars to their pocket, right? Um, I mean, if it gets executed, they are bringing dollars to the pocket. What service are they providing to the community? Number one, they are providing the service of.
Housing.
Homes, housing, right? Now, in in a market that's oversaturated with housing, that's not a benefit, you know, to to anyone. Uh, that's just a bunch of houses that are just gonna exist or or empty lots, zombie subdivisions.
But it won't.
And we saw that in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, when a lot of these subdivisions collapsed. But today, we're gonna see, uh, at least for the next ten years, I think, we're gonna see, uh, hopefully, that that scarcity come down. And then hopefully, at some point, we do have a little bit of a surplus, cause then all of our, the the housing market, it will stabilize, right? Okay, so providing homes is, that's, that's the product that they're bringing. Um, there, there is a benefit uh that it's addressing, a problem that's addressing now, but it's not necessarily gonna be a problem forever. And then you're gonna have all these homes, right? Without the potential of uh a- addressing amenities, let's see. Almost lost my train of thought. Um, if uh, we, going back to the entitlement or the sense of entitlement, if a developer comes in and says, uh, this is my, this is, this is my square. This is what I'm putting in my square, and what goes inside of my square is gonna benefit me and the people who live in there. You're not building a community, right? You gotta think outside of that square. And so it is fair. I mean, when you're talking about double dipping, or you're talking, talking about beating a developer over the head, it is fair to say, if you're going to create uh additional density and additional impacts in our community, we wanna see something for us, for the people who currently live here, not just the people who you're gonna be bringing as a result of your development.
I think the people are doing that right now with what we're doing with this plan. I mean, right now, everybody is, that that's one acre, and and you've seen from when we started this process to where we are today, they're coming more on board with this third acre thing.
Yep.
You know, than no, oh, yeah, one acre.
It's amazing.
It's, it's coming around, but.
Nobody's here to tell us we're doing it wrong. I I think that says we're probably doing it right.
But there's, there's gotta be those amenities that come with that, right? Cause they're, they're gaining.
Right.
I mean, they could go in today and develop it all at one acre and and.
That's right.
I mean, you're, you're getting three for one at the point now.
But we only have that leverage to work with the developer to give us the community.
Yes.
I live out there, so us proverbially, um, give us the community something if we do that through the zone.
Yes.
Once you've given the zone, they're entitled.
Right.
So that's when they have a right.
We want that agreement applied, so, yeah, so, so to that, so that, I, I, I'm sorry, one question. So you explained to me the the third acre. So what are we talking about when that gets zoned, so to speak, is is on approval of of the development? Because my understanding was that the one-third acre is gonna be what the one acre is today. Is is, so if somebody does wanna do all one-third acre lots in their subdivision, all they gotta do is come in and and it's a basic one-third acre subdivision.
Rezone it first.
So, well, and that's the, that's what I'm trying to funnel right down to. Maybe I I didn't say it very clearly. Do you want to say, we'll just give you the zone? Because the map is colored yellow, and everyone who comes in and asks for yellow can get yellow. Do you wanna say that, or do you wanna say, only if, and here is our wish list?
Well, it's our streets, we need the streets.
So the streets will have to come.
Otherwise, I'd say, yeah, just do a third acre, but we've gotta make sure those streets stay aligned. If someone comes in and develops with the, you know, in the middle of our main thoroughfares, that's a problem.
You're talking about connectivity, not just whitening.
Yeah, connectivity.
Okay, so uh, that's, so double dipping, uh, that's where my thought was. There we go, coming back to it. Uh, when you're looking at what a developer is required and obligated to give after they've gotten the zone, we can exact, but we can only exact for what is roughly proportionate and reasonably related to that subdivision. The project costs, that 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 intersection that's down the road that they are creating a direct impact on. That's about as far as you can get when it comes to project costs. Um, now, if it's a a huge uh development that brings in a ton of truck traffic, for example, you could probably go a few miles down the road and say, hey, you're, you're affecting that intersection, you're affecting forty seven hundred west and twelfth street, even though you're way out on eighty five hundred west, we want some improvements over there. You could potentially do that. Um, it's a lot harder when it comes to these subdivisions, just cause residential, it's a little bit hard. You're spreading those cars out all over, right? And so what is reasonable, uh, what is roughly proportionate and reasonably related to the property? That's after they've got the zone. Before they get the zone, it's what do you want? You, the community, what do you wanna get from the developer in order for them to get more homes? So I mean, you can say that's.
Over the one-third.
One-third, one-fourth, yeah, one-eighth, whatever you choose, anything less than one right now. If they wanna give them three-quarters, you give them an ask. That's fair to do. That's, that's the development negotiation. And as long as they can still go back and calculate that they're getting their ROI, that what they need in order to be a successful developer, they're gonna come back with a gift. And that's, that's fair to do. That's, you don't feel like you're beating the developer up or a landowner up by 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 doing that.
Everything's negotiable.
That's exactly right. And and we actually do that on a proof routine basis on in our office. We just don't always do it in public in front of everyone.
Go ahead.
You talk about how the the community is, is getting on board more with a third of an acre versus both the acre, but it's, they're gonna feel, it's like a bait and switch if you top third acre and then all of a sudden you're down to a quarter or smaller, when they thought that your map looked like third of an acre.
Well, and but that's why, that's, that was part of the reason, and you were at the meeting, why when Commissioner Jenkins said it should all be yellow, and that's to take away that, one of those layers. We'll take away one of those veils, so to speak, so that everybody at least knows that it's one-third. But the only time, to me, there, there's, there's gotta be some of this give and take in this for the smaller lots, uh, because those smaller lots are needed.
Cause they're, they've already given up. And and I'm not saying it's not what you're doing isn't right, but they're looking at, we went from an acre to a third. And so that's what we thought we were getting, and now you're top there.
But 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 it depends on who you're, who you're talking is saying that. And what we're talking about, the people that are buying into this third acre more and more, is the people that own property, that own chunks of property. And it's not, and there's this, there's more of those folks that did not want to see anything go less than an acre, is there is people that live on an acre lot out there. But what you're seeing now is that those folks are seeing that that it's a better way to develop in smaller lots and, you know, possibly know that they can, that they can zone for some smaller stuff with some give and take happening, than to see it all in these, in my, my words, fragmented development that we've been doing for the last fifty years. We've got houses on streets, we don't have communities. And that's the most important thing to me is going forward, is starting to put communities together. And the communities won't come together until we cut down on the size of these lots a little bit and make everything more affordable, first of all, for the people that are, that are buying the homes. And then putting things a little bit closer together and creating the community a little bit more closely, so that it's not all get in your car and drive somewhere. So that you have to congregate a park or, you know, a trail or, or whatever the case might be where people can get together, because our community, the way it is now, whenever you need something or wanna do something, if you wanna walk, and my wife and I walk pretty religiously every week, uh, at least three times a week.
To church.
And to church on Sunday. It's the only time these legs get used. Anyway, no, is, is to, is, is you take your life in your own hands with the way that we're developing. Because we're not developing a community, we're developing houses on streets and forty mile an hour speed limits.
Yeah.
And and that's, that's a disservice to what is happening to the beautiful property that we've farmed and we've seen farm for all of these years, for our lifetimes and generations before us. It's a disservice to that, as far as I'm concerned, to just plop houses on one acre lots. Ten years later, watch the weeds grow and the cars get parked, and watch everybody go down the road forty, fifty miles an hour, because you know if it's, if it's a forty mile an hour speed limit, they're going fifty.
Oh, I.
So, and you, yeah, you live it. And so that's why, to me, it's important to embrace more of a community concept of what we're doing going forward.
I don't agree with this.
Yeah, I just, it's just that perception.
Yeah, I, I know.
Those that are there, they, they're, okay, they wanted an acre. You're talking a third, so, okay.
Hopefully, they understand that. That perception is, now that they're getting the amenities that come with it, that will benefit them as well. That's where they've gotta understand, you know, where we're going with this.
The idea more is, it's going to probably average out to be more of a three homes per acre, cause we really can't build that dense. And so I I would like to see it still average out to three homes an acre out there, cause when it comes down to it, I don't know how much we can support more than that.
Yeah.
So I think we're going to try and create, we're, we're not gonna create a dense community where it doesn't make sense, or it doesn't, um, it, you know, where it's, it's not viable.
Right.
And so that, I I see what you mean. And so I think if we change the mindset of, we're expecting a third acre average density in the area, um, then hopefully that helps with the the expectation that there'll be kind of clusters here and there, but it's gonna take forever to infill all of this, and it's gonna be a while. And and I don't know that we'll even have the water to do it.
Right.
Quite honestly, so.
Is we haven't been building, people don't know what to expect, because we've never, we haven't been building, like you said, we've been building wrong for too long. So that's a perception that we have, that it's gonna look like this, what we've, what we're used to seeing, what we're talking about, whole new concepts that create community feels like you're talking about. And uh, that's, and it's hard for people to see that or understand that without seeing it, and you can't see it until we're allowed, I'm a landowner and a developer, and so until I'm allowed to, which is what we're trying to work on with the county right now, is how can we make, how can we be the prototype? How can we be the example of what this is what we want out here? And that's, that comes with collaboration and whatnot, but once people see it, but I totally understand, because as a landowner, as a farmer, I also have that mentality of, I don't want people, but people are coming. And so how can we, how can we accommodate these people in a way that is not um, just a, just a mess and and death, or decreases value, but we can actually do, or increases value, increases quality of life. And all that's done, like you said, amenities. So yeah, there is going to be more building than what we originally thought maybe, but there's amenities we never thought we'd have so close to us either, that are also quite nice.
Well.
But I mean, it's the average of what we're focusing on.
Yeah.
I just have to know that the subdivision river.
Oh, yeah, yeah, people not happy about that.
There are already two people that I know of that have, have gone and purchased other, other property that have lived there their entire life. But because of the way that was done, they have, they're going to sell their homes and move.
And I would look at the map and find those green spaces and just move it further out, way out.
Well.
People, what? Go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, there, there's another a- advantage, I I believe in my mind, at least my mind, about uh hi- higher density. I I live on a road on three hundred north and more, there's three houses. They paved that road three times in my life. And we have not paid in taxes enough to even pave that one. And so, uh, you know, we, there's gonna be some economy and scale in the taxes. And it's gonna make a huge difference in how our infrastructures look out there. Because the thing of it is, is if you got a hundred and fifty feet between houses, it, it's gonna be a losing proposition. There's just no way that can be sustainable. So a third acre, I, I don't know whether that breaks even or not. I I don't know that, but I'm okay with the third. But I'm also okay with little villages, and I'll call Village in Plain City where the old school was a a village. I I've got about eight guys that I've worked with almost all my life, and some of them lived in huge houses, some of them lived in, not so huge. But I'm the only one in the same house. You know where they live? Every one of them live in a patio. And they think I'm absolutely bat crazy. And so the thing of it is, is not. And so the thing of it is, is not only is there a need for the people coming into our community, but we have people here. I'm seventy seven years old. I don't know how long I'll last. But if I last long enough, I'm probably going to want to be in one of these little communities. Where there's some amenities in there, I'd walk over, get a cup of coffee. Go over and get a pastry, sit around and lie with my homies, you know, because that is then I hear the rap. How do I do that? I don't know. But that that's what makes communities and that's what we're all about at this table. And so I don't know whether we're making this too hard or not. In in my mind is is we can start with a third if we get something that benefits a community more. There's no harm in going smaller. The only harm that I have is 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 I don't like on-street parking, but that's a conversation for another day.
Yeah.
But so I, you know, let's let's try to not make this too hard. Let's let's make it to where that if somebody comes in with something that makes sense and fits in the area, that we we would be more or less apt to approve that as long as the people around there still get some benefit of that. Thank you.
Did you finish your?
I've done.
Well, well, I I I hate to see people get upset to the point where they feel like they have to move away from their community. I mean, that's terrible and it and it's it it's not good for the community for that to happen. But at the same time, we have no choice but to embrace the future. And the future's in our face right now. And if we don't start doing what we're doing today, in my my estimation, should have been done on the Matt general plan in two thousand and three. We're twenty years late doing what we're trying to do now. And if you think it's hard, I'm not pointing you out. But if people think that this is hard doing this now, can you imagine how difficult this would have been to try and get done twenty years ago? However, if the vision would have been there, we would, we would be building on to what was already pinned in place. And unfortunately, we're having to put the pins in place now. And it's almost on the verge of being too late. And that's what seems very unfortunate to me. And 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 then it goes back to folks' expectations. Well, they expected to be able to live their life quietly on their property. But at the same time, everybody has to realize everybody has property rights. And and what's bad about that is the folks that are that have created all of the subdivisions that are in place today were farmers. They're not farming anymore. So in order to survive, they've sold the farm or through attrition of the family, they've sold the farm. But one way or another, the farms are going away, and it's because of the farmers that they're going away. Because for whatever reason, either nobody wanted to stay in farm or there wasn't enough money in it. It was easier to go get a job and a pension and a 401K somewhere else and not have to worry about their livelihood from year to year, whatever that reason is. It's happened and the landowners, mostly farmers, is the reason why we're here today, trying to struggle through this process. If everybody would have stayed in agriculture, we wouldn't be having this conversation today. But unfortunately, that's not where we're at. And with the economic development that's been promoted for Utah for since before the Olympics very heavily, now we're to a point where Hill Air Force Base has grown and is going to continue to grow with with what they have going on up there. So of course, our population is going to grow with those jobs. If the mega site is developed or or even starts to develop, that's going to create more jobs. We've got to have a place for these folks to live. So I hate to hear people moving away. Hurts my heart as to hear people are so, you know, so un so unhappy, first of all, but so kind of don't take this the wrong way, but so unwilling to embrace what's going to happen that they don't want to stay and participate in that. I I that's that's my feelings. I I see both sides. Anyway, for whatever that's worth.
So I want to re recap on just a couple of things that I think that conversation revolved around. And it it kind of ties together on some of the other conversations we've been having. One of which being, okay, talking about a lot of averaging and allowing smaller lots to be a little bit closer together in some places as long as it averages out. And what kind of effect that has on the transportation system? Generally speaking, zero, because it it averages out. It's the same number of homes that are being accessed to from the major street system now. What does it do to the side street, to the small cul-de-sac or to the little neighborhood residential street? You might see a few more on those, depending on how they they lay it out. If it's a very big project, that's lot averaged and there's a ton of density in the middle surrounded by a sea of 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 large lots on the outside. The infrastructure getting out to it, obviously, zero impacts can be the exact same as as if it was just thirty acre lots everywhere. But on the inside of that development, you're going to see some impacts. Fortunately, the larger it is, the better the master plan it's going to be, and the developer will address those impacts on a development by development basis. So I'm not too worried about the infrastructure side of things. As as far as the perception, if we say third acre and we give half of a third acre to people. I did have a conversation with somebody at the open house. We were talking about one acre lots. And then I said, well, how are the small, how are the smaller ones coming on board? And I said, well, it's probably through either lot averaging or through cluster subdivisions that well, that's just misleading. You're lying to us. You're telling us it's one acre and it's not one acre. So to to Becky's point, there is this perception that one acre means one acre where we haven't specified on these maps that medium means one acre or sorry, medium means a third acre. That's one of the reasons, again, I did not specify on the maps what it means. That's why in the plan, we're going to write what it means. There's not enough room on the maps to say what it means. So medium means this. And if you do a really good job, you might be able to do some loud averaging. And if you do a really good job, you might be able to get quarter acre lots with lot averaging.
We've just been using third acres in town.
Right. I think so. So and and so we've got two, if you recall back to three meetings ago, we've got two objectives and implementation standards in the code or sorry, in the so what is it? What are we talking about here? In the general plan, as it's currently drafted. One is third acre if they do a good job, right? Third acre on average, if they do a good job, averaging still being allowed as part of that. Or quarter acre if they do a very good job and still being able to average out that quarter acre. If if any part of that doesn't sound tenable, let's let's address it and change it right now. Otherwise.
As long as the baseline is a third, then.
Or a quarter if they're really good. Or do you want to stick with a baseline of third, no matter what?
Based on a third, and then it's just implied that you, we have that. I I like in the rest of your conditional rezoning through development agreements. I just, I just don't want any of the verbiage to give that to give the impression of a right to start out with because we just get tied to those.
Okay, yeah, and and you said it right, an impression, because it's a sense of a right as opposed to an actual right.
And I legally, I don't know where we end up, so.
Okay, so let's go to what that says. Residential, okay. Areas planned for medium sized residential lots should be the areas that have access to sewer services or with installation of sewer infrastructure at the sole expense of the developer can be given access to sewer services. The future land use map shows property that is within three hundred feet of existing sewer. This area will change over time as sewer infrastructure expands. So two point two point one. In areas planned for medium sized lots, that's the lighter yellow, the county should consider rezoning properties to allow fifteen thousand square foot lots. Generally, this coincides with the RE fifteen zone. A rezone of this nature should only be allowed if smart growth implementation strategies are volunteered by the developer as provided in land use principle two point six point two. And the next one down says smaller lot sizes in areas planned for medium sized lots could be allowed for master plan communities. Lot average subdivisions, I've misspoke before, only it's only applicable if they do a good job.
Okay.
Lot average subdivisions, connectivity incentivized subdivisions and other developments that proposed to to implement exemplary smart growth principles as provided in land use action, whatever it was.
This is what you brought it to the second.
Yes, second meeting.
Work session.
Yep.
Right. Well, I like that.
Yeah.
Okay, if you guys are comfortable with that.
What did everybody think of that?
Yeah. So no lot averaging unless they do a very good job, in which case you could do smaller sizes.
That's kind of what I thought.
Yeah.
How it's been all along.
Mine too, yeah, yeah. And and then when I saw it in print, it was like that. I thought that that's the direction we were going, but sorry.
And and can we use that verbiage for you into Highlands as well?
Yeah.
So that we can get our connectivity.
Yeah, and that that's, this is intended to apply to both sides right now. So smaller lot sizes as small as a quarter acre on average. In areas planned for medium sized lots could be allowed for master master plan communities, lot average subdivisions, connectivity incentivized subdivisions and other developments. Okay. Okay, good. As long as we're okay with that. Oh, base density calc's about, look at that, one fourth acre. Highlight and highlight, I'll fix it later. There's going to be plenty of time for hopefully for.
Code editing.
Yeah.
Hiding.
Well, that's what we get to do after we're done with this. Now, now we gotta go make it all fit in the code.
Yeah, a lot of cool things to do.
Yeah, well, so we're going to have a lot of rezones and we're going to have a lot of code writing. And hopefully, we can get code writing done before we get rezones in. But we should probably, actually, let's address that. I'm just going to put a note right down here.
I was just joking.
Well, are you gonna get, are you going to?
I am actually not a great coder. I coded. And I get with.
Better incorporate quick and then charge yourself lots of money so you can create a city so we could actually do this. Okay.
It won't be any different. It'd probably be worse at first for a while.
Smart growth print principles. Well, I won't be writing the general plan, so I'll have a little bit more time.
We can get caught up on all that.
The last ten years, well. Well, you know that it's going to happen the minute, you know, that this drops into place.
To rezoning. So I actually, let's just say prior to implementing.
Where everyone's going to have to rezone, will you allow rezoning and subdivisions to be run simultaneously at the same time? Like the application for rezone and subdivision, same. Because you're going to have, you just mentioned that you're going to have. I mean, I'm waiting right now specifically for this to do the rezone, so.
Um, that's going to have to be a question with the county commissioners. We'll have to address administratively.
Or pay grade.
Yeah. You guys get a dinner once a year and a clock when you retire.
You're gonna get a lot of, you're gonna have a lot of stuff you want to grab, especially if you're starting those out.
Yeah, doing a rezone and then subdivision. It'd be nice to see that, be able to go at the same time, especially if we're okay with the concept plan.
Just especially if you're sticking to the, you know, the third acre, you're not going to do anything special or different. It's just pretty straightforward.
If you're going to see a concept plan with a lot of these, I don't see why there's a purpose of not rezoning and granting you a preliminary subdivision at the same time.
Yep.
Because you're approving that concept.
Okay, so here's where the challenge comes in with that. Developer gets vested in the subdivision when they apply for the subdivision. But if they don't even have the zone to get vested, we get into a gray spot where when we get sued, I'm not even sure what that's called. So it it turns an administrative decision, which is a subdivision approval, into a legislative decision, which is a rezone approval.
You're right, they're two different.
Now, that might be okay. Let me let me run it through our legal advisors. That is fully the risk of the developer if they want to do that at that point. Because if you guys say, no, we're not ready for this subdivision at this point right here, all the costs of the developer sunk into surveying and and creating their subdivision plot is lost. And maybe that's a, maybe that's a risk.
We're asking for a concept. I guess you could draw, I mean, you could take a napkin almost and draw a concept and bring it in.
We, our current code doesn't currently talk about concept or what the requirements are for concept. For cluster subdivisions, we have something called sketch plan. I hate that. We should call it concept. So it does require minimum amounts of stuff. If we do the idea of so other places I've worked have had a three step dance. You have to submit a concept development plan. That's not even, you have to reason on the prop four step, reason on the property. Submit a concept development plan, application, get that approved, then submit a preliminary plan application, get that approved. And then submit a final plan application, get that that four step dance is a nightmare.
But wouldn't wouldn't it's a nightmare, yes, but wouldn't wouldn't you want to see the concept first before the rezone?
Concept and rezone should go together.
Yes, okay.
So and that's the thing, if we ask for concept plans to have a minimum amount of stuff, we're not asking for a huge amount of dollars to be spent. We are asking for it to be surveyed, but beyond that, not a huge lot of dollars have to be spent.
I I want to see something a little bit more than a napkin, though. You know, I don't want to see a full blown set prints. No, that's not my expectation. I'm not
Just, you know, it won't be ridiculous. Scan the napkin in on a PDF.
Yeah. Put it up on the screen. It looks great. The zoom will work and everything's good.
That's right.
The world is perfect.
It's about this water and it's about this.
Let's see, let's see. If I throw my cigarette butt over there, I used to work with a guy like that. Did you see that coke can over there? Somewhere in between there.
Is that how he surveyed properties?
Build buildings.
But they're still standing in the day, right?
They are.
Okay, so lot averaging with lots under thirty acre must be part of, what did we call that? So we don't even need that bullet point anymore. Okay. Got it addressed. Codes, okay, parks determined, okay, the acreage, a lot, coverage regulation. So it's not wall to wall building, determine what that is based on loss size. Are we still okay with that idea? Lot coverage? Lot coverage, so create a lot coverage regulation so we're not dealing with just someone coming in and building setback to setback to setback.
I think there's a need for that in some places. And so I I don't know that I'd want to put that regulation in because there are places that there are people that want that.
That want to build setback to setback to setback. On a very small lot on a, let's say it's a three thousand square foot lot in our mixed use residential zone. You're going to need to build to your setbacks to even get a reasonably sized home.
I'd be nervous about regulating that.
Say that, that means solid surface of any kind?
That's a good question. So Ogden City currently, their only coverage regulation is that no more than twenty five percent of your backyard can be covered by any kind of building, hard surface. Other places that I've worked said your entire lot, no more than twenty five percent of your entire lot can be covered. And twenty five percent of it applied to some of the the larger lots. Once we got down into the ten thousand square foot, we would say no more than fifty percent or something to that effect.
Well, we don't have water for grass. We got to get rid of that.
Okay.
But is there a maximum setback? A maximum setback?
No.
Because you could you could build that house far enough off the sidewalk to say, I don't have a backyard.
In Ogden City, yes, yeah. And and also, it's twenty five percent of what's left of your backyard. So if you just build one building at a time, you could probably skirt that, but but don't tell Ogden City that I said that because I'm going to use it.
I don't know if that's regulation that we need to now, and maybe that's I I don't know, because I I would like to incentivize some more affordable housing through some development agreements. But at the same time, I think there's going to be people that really just don't want any yard at all.
So let's address that again.
That and the master development agreement.
Housing affordability, the master development agreement.
Okay, that sounds great.
Great. Okay, shall we look at maps for a minute or five?
Yeah, let me do me to start on this one real quick.
Yeah, if you don't mind, let's do it. Are you guys okay with you into Highlands first?
This this area I'm
This is really the first time we talked about it.
I'm concerned about the skyline, about the density on Skyline Drive. Because of those cul-de-sacs and right now, it just isn't built out to handle a lot of traffic.
Thank you, right. I didn't even notice that.
So I think that should probably all go to the lighter color. So that's my main concern there.
Sorry, guys, I took my jacket off.
Because what with the dead end or how many roads from going to Dead End Street and I I just don't think that'll
Okay.
work out.
In this area, I mean, it's kind of the same deal. Give them the third, but if they want to go smaller, they got to bring that agreement back.
Yeah, I'll have to figure it out, but it'll be, it'll be hard to get too much density there. But yeah, if it's just yellow, then it'll be, I I am concerned that right now, because even even any development at all right now without requiring connectivity, like even a third acre, it's going to be a big problem.
Right.
So how do we say in the you went to Highlands that like if this person wants to develop their land right here, they can't just put another cul-de-sac coming in from Comby Road, like this island, this this has to have connectivity or it doesn't get developed. So if you want to make money, you connect it.
Hang on, let's say one thing at a time. Hang on. So skyline, what if that what about, what about up around Comby and north of Comby? So those, the the larger pieces up north of Comby above the roundabout, those are, there are a few larger pieces of property up there that have the potential of developing.
They do, but to the development, develop at that dense because of the, if they have to go to Skyline Drive.
Can they can, yeah, connect, what they could potentially connect from Comby to Skyline, maybe something like, you know.
Like the roundabout is still underserved for the area.
So are you thinking?
I just think all of the yellow, all yellow.
Light yellow?
Yeah, the light yellow.
Okay.
Not not the green, but the light yellow and then it has some some ability to be denser if we figure out how to make it happen.
Okay. Perfect.
One right here, that makes sense.
Okay, now uh, connectivity.
Yeah, how do we make sure that as they develop, they have to write connectivity something?
So we've got that map that will go this map here that will go in the plan.
Okay.
I zoomed in now. I don't know where my color changing is. So okay, just uh, deal with this here. Into Highlands. Let's see, so street connectivity required based on conceptual. Connections of. Whichever image map XYZ. Uh, unless.
Alternate connectivity, ultimate suitable connectivity can be found. The easiest one.
Be found right. Or the land is not developed.
Well, on that, isn't that what you had on the map last night? Was it if it develops, it has to be connected to that?
But it's not, but there it's, there's no language to enforce that.
So we'll put it right in here.
I, so because the way Comby Road functions right now, I'm nervous about having lots of homes along it. But is that is the idea? And if we do a pathway along it. Are a lot of homes next to it going to be a problem? Cause all of a sudden we've got this pathway that's supposed to be kind of like a pedestrian transport and then we'll have a lot of. Homes or is that gonna help it slow down?
The width will be the same hundred feet, right? And so the the amount, whether it's a half acres on that it is now or the um fifteen.
And where the depth is shallow there, that makes sense. I see.
And what this also does is it gives people the opportunity to redivide, potentially redivide their land if they have enough acreage, which gives us the opportunity to exact enough. So we don't have to pay for that path. Yeah, in fact, we could, we could potentially even have them install their portion of it. It might look really weird having little. Pieces of asphalt every so often, but.
I wondered if that was kind of the game plan. And so that works. And I don't, really, that's the only area along Comby Road that I worry about the frontage getting too short. I would like if if they really put these roads through and have smaller frontage in, I'm sorry, this parcel, I think it would be okay. Or in these, you know, these other areas, I think it'd be okay. It's really a long Comby road that concerns me. But actually, if you ask the neighbors, they would say no. Cause we we heard them before when they were doing that. They don't like the.
The narrower ones?
Yeah, they don't like the narrow.
I mean.
But I don't, it it's really the only concern I had was Comby Road doing that.
Putting putting rational logic in it, Comby is a neighborhood collector. You're picking up a lot of 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 cars. And so it would make sense to do it there. Whereas if you're on a small residential street, kind of having more homes linearly. Makes a little bit more sense there, especially because you save a little bit on infrastructure.
Right.
If you do that.
So like if this patch right here was developed more dense densely and we got the roads going through, just putting the roads through. Will be a huge benefit to the community, even if we had more homes in there. And honestly, if someone came in and put some sort of smaller even, well, it's by a school, so it, yeah, something smaller probably would sell.
So we did um, R one ten right across the street from the school across from Eastwood.
And people are very mad.
They are. Oh, not not the two or three people that benefited.
Yeah, the two people that were notified zoned all the land within five hundred feet.
Okay, so I was kind of thinking, um, at least where some of the schools are, we might wanna consider mixed use um, residential. But I don't know how that's gonna work.
I think that would be just because of, once you get to right here, getting through here and to the main collector streets is rough. So having it right here is nice because you're you're close to these bigger roads. But anything we put up here. Cause already Eastwood and Comby are are kind of crazy. And then even Wasatch that comes around here and swoops around Wasatch is pretty nuts. So those three roads everyone drives are. Kind of rough.
Okay, so wider lots should only be required along collector streets, otherwise. The zone can allow for it, right?
Right.
So, okay.
I think that's. Oh, this, we might have a possible, this hillside here that's very steep. Uh, do we want a possible park designation here?
Like down in the ravine?
Yeah.
I I think that would be a great spot to put it down.
That's what I think. So maybe putting a possible parks on there was the only.
Great. So I'm I'm thinking in order to get that road, either of those roads there were were they're probably to get that ROI, they're gonna need to have. A little bit higher density in there. So um, I was gonna paint it just the the lighter green and I changed it last second to the the yellow.
Yeah.
But it's, are you comfortable if it's not a park, if we can't raise the money to buy it from the the landowner?
Oh, yeah, it'll be residential. Yeah.
Okay.
But just it's another possibility.
It's actually would make for a really cool park, I think.
Yeah, I think it'd be a cool park. But it would, well, it's proximity to eighty nine. I don't know how many people want to listen to eighty nine, but you know.
It's it's actually really cool up in there. The trees are really thick. Um, you don't notice eighty nine.
Actually, yeah, there are a couple. And there's also, there are a couple of homes right there. They're gonna be completely blighted unless roads go through.
You mean down at the bottom? I think the ones that you're thinking of have already been purchased by UDOT.
They have been, but I don't know. Do they need, does Unite need the land that far out? They need all the way to the houses?
That's what I bought it. I think they're renting those buildings out to the people who are living.
Only one of them, the other person sold and is renting and they and UDOT is renting it out.
Okay.
But I don't know if they actually needed the house or if they just cut off, they needed to. The they'd had, they were cutting off their access. And so they bought the houses because the houses would no longer have access.
Um, my understanding is they're probably gonna continue to buy in that area. Um, because. The likelihood of a of a need for interchange or something up in that area is gonna be needed. And I don't know. Or.
All of that whole interchange right there.
So we'll see how it turns out. Cause if the homes end up not being needed and they can sell it back and the homes don't get torn down, that'd be cool.
You don't love buying homes. It's really insane how many homes there. I had no idea. There's a whole division in there that does nothing but.
But it is a really cool little alley back there. It's really cool. Okay, I think those are all my thoughts.
Your list looks a little longer than what you just said.
Oh, there's some of them for the other thing, but we already talked about it. Some of them I was like, yeah.
Active transportation or recreation, anything else there other than possible park?
Yeah, maybe putting a possible park there.
Going over Kobe?
The Comby one going down over there. That's a big bridge going over track.
It is.
But it's pretty high.
It it's high on one side, the other side. Yeah, so I don't know what UDOT would wanna do to make that connection. As long as basically we're just. We need on and off for Comby. Don't close Comby is basically what we're saying and and not just give us a one way in and one way out sort of thing. So we'll see.
We need more access there for the community. And then the community actually can grow quite a bit more if it with just that access.
You know, if we wanna talk about an alternative over by 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 B flying over those tracks, maybe we can list it and say, all right, you don't give us either this or this. Tell us which one's least expensive for you. Uh, and maybe that's a, at least give some options. You guys wanna talk about that? Think about that?
I don't think the baby folks would like that, but so it goes, but, oh, and then it would end up in that. That warehouse area.
Come back down into the light like you were showing on that other one.
Trying to find my map here.
Yeah, yep, actually. So the folks online can see, let me pull the maps up as well.
Well, so now.
Their last light right around here.
Okay.
Yeah, this is.
I'm not trying to talk too loudly about, I mean, the roundabout kind of thing. I think there's enough space in there that you can avoid the roundabout, but if not.
This is some of the oldest development in the area, so.
Let's see, where were we looking? Okay. Actually, let's come back down here.
And then you come up here and then the homes start are pretty new. Once you start right here on.
Okay.
That's where the new, this though, I don't really like connecting it by B because driving people through here is is not a good idea.
What about behind the homes? I know we'd have to deal with the railroad. Yeah, just using the railroad corridor.
Oh, if the railroad lets have the corridor, that'd be fun.
I'm pretty sure they won't, but. But we can always chat. They've actually got a pretty wide. So all of that green that you see on the screen here. Come on.
If there's room without, um, it's just, you know, hillside, but if there's, if there's room, then behind the houses would be better than. Nothing at all.
Yes, you can kind of see the hillside here through the shade relief. And you're right, it does drop down right behind those homes. Um, I was almost thinking this area by B here. Not a. Not a whole ton going on right there.
Oh, before you hit the newer houses.
Yes, maybe something.
Oh, cause there's, yeah, the homes are a little bit further apart there.
I don't think there's anything on either side of the road here. I know the railroad owns right up to the road right there. And there might be one or two homes over here on this side.
Okay, yeah, I see. Yeah, that's a good option. But if you can get over the railroad track there and then you can get to that, that I, that island of stuff.
Yeah.
There's.
Which would make.
Random rental units.
Yeah, it'd make that island a little bit more useful.
Manufacturing, cheese manufacturing. There's all sorts of stuff going on. One whole block.
See, oh. So. Alternative. Okay. Parks, rec trails.
Gotta get to a parks and rec organization or we won't be.
Hey Charlie, you better get to that meeting next week. The one that you talked about. I don't think we're gonna get through everything tonight.
Uh, yeah, that's, I I think we're okay as as long as I've got some hint or idea of which direction to go, but.
Anything else you needed input on for this or?
No.
Oh, were you gonna put something about? About how to get the sidewalks within here?
Um, in the plan, yes. So having sidewalk connectivity will be in the transportation and an active transportation section.
And it says like below Comby Road is where this is the area that we. To fill in.
Yep, exactly. Okay, um, I was just thinking, options or or opportunities, just putting something like this in the plan. Uh, opportunities.
Yeah, and honestly, if we just had an extra stop sign at one of the stops, it might work for quite a while.
Okay.
The one in front of the church. Two stop signs instead of a yield and who's yielding? What are we doing? Chicken right there, kind of fun.
I don't think it's a yield sign. I think it's a guest sign.
We just kind of like, you going up now?
Okay. You to Highlands, we're good?
Yep.
Okay. Let's move on to. West and see if we've some of the changes.
I thought you were gonna surprise us with like a three foot sub. That's why you were running late.
That would have been awesome, right?
Yeah.
I'm not that great.
That that could be connected here. And I think putting that in so, cause if they develop too much on that one. Maybe considering that connection right there too. Nobody's gonna like these, but it's just that they know that if it's going to be developed, then that's what. Because I don't know that this can go through. If I'm looking at it right, that's the one. Cause that connection might be easier to get than the one coming from Comby.
Okay.
If I'm looking at this right.
I'll I'll look at it and I'll I'll check the um.
Here's Comby. Yeah, it's this yellow one right here. This one might be tough to get, but this one might be possible.
Okay, okay. Okay. So, um, Brendan, that was that comment based on the desire to end a little early today or uh, would you?
We're gonna tell, it's already seven. I just, there's a lot of stuff still to go on. I don't think, if we can do it, great, but. We're at your disposal, Charlie. I got lots of comments I wrote down from last night.
Oh, great, okay.
Well, he took one of them off.
Oh, yeah, I don't have the other one.
This one makes sense.
Yeah, that's okay. Marko.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. And you had to see it. Alright, so um.
I'm gonna have to get some new ones.
New eyes? I think there's a black market for that.
I think I need to finally get my eyes checked.
I mean.
About that, I I'm. I don't usually wear glasses. These are a a blue light filter, one magnifying, uh, and I just recently have had to start wearing them.
I just like, I can't read right there. I have to move back to here.
A little more far side of the. I've actually got, I've actually got trifocals, but I'm not willing to accept that on that age.
You know, I was doing really good and then it was like all of a sudden.
Yeah.
Whenever needed glasses, then all of a sudden.
I'll be forty this year and I have been noticing some changes. Not not fun. Second puberty.
When does that hit?
We still recording this?
I got a lot more gray than Charlie. I'm worried.
It's common. Okay, so uh, changes that were made over by uh, the Hammer's Place here on the the corner. Um, returned it back to yellow with mixed use commercial on the frontage. Came down to the um, this area here took away a lot of the mixed use residential and the. C three or the the heavy commercial. So um, I think those were the only changes. Oh, and then colored the rest of the area over here in yellow, because we're pretty sure that there's a lot of landowners out there just itching to.
Yeah.
Do something. Might as well.
Just out of curiosity, why did we go out and with that third acre clear out on four thousand mark?
Um, the 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 hope, no, it's good, good question. The hope would be to get them, encourage them to incorporate into the city. And the only way we're gonna offer that encouragement is by giving them a little extra density.
I just, I mean, the infrastructure is not there. I don't know how they would ever support.
Maybe they'll put it in.
That one's a.
Maybe.
So I don't know how you'd ever get sewer to flow there. So we got, I spent a lot of years over there.
We had our other subdivision, oh, over here. Okay, this is for the role. This is on the bank of the bay.
It is. Now, if you go up there, there's quite a bit of that area. Actually, you could see it with the crosshatch that is in floodplain. It's actually kind of amazing because four thousand, according to those cross hatches, acts as that barrier. Uh, for a lot of this, but um, there's still some developable land up in there. And I envision in the long term, um, the potential of uh, some development on that box elder side. And if it makes more sense as far sewage goes and stuff like that, for a city to overlap that county boundary, they could certainly do that and have a city that that crosses over. From Box Elder down to here. So the desire would be to just get them to work with the city, whichever city it is. It's it's also a cross hatch. Uh, so it's shown that it is in Plain Cities Annexation Declaration. Um, whether it's residential in the future, I know Plain Cities talks to about the possibility of having some um, manufacturing out in that area. So there there might be other possibilities as well. And at the end of the day, sewer might just have to be pumped. And. Yeah, and uh, if if we get this big system out here on the west.
It's almost gotta go to Plain City to get any sewer, because it would never be economical to pump that sewer to Central Weaver.
Right.
You would have to pump the plain city and plain city only supports plain city.
Hopefully they incorporate them.
Yeah, but where's this line here? Right there, isn't it? Yeah.
But it doesn't, like all this is too far. I mean, Bermuda's there. They might could get a little bit far west from here to that pump. And then it pumps again right there. To get it to, well, pump again, I guess, right here to get it.
But is this big enough for that? If they wanted to.
Does that Central Weaver put that line big enough to?
Yeah.
Be planned there? I highly doubt it because it's in Plain Cities area, but I don't know.
They've got dual lines running in parallel there. So that was one of the questions that was asked of JDC is do they have the ability to support JDC's capacity? And the answer is yes, they do.
Plain City.
They just did that. They just finished that project laying that dual line there, but you still gotta remember there's a lot of growth on the east bench. Up here.
Yep, true. Okay, yeah, uh, my, my only thought was encourage them to incorporate.
Yep, I agree.
Oh, uh, on, on that, back to you into Highlands. Any, um, issues with encouraging incorporation there? I mean, I don't know that we've got any leverage to offer the people.
That's the thing for them. They're like, I, we incorporate and we just pay more higher taxes. A lot of them don't have a lot of faith in South Ogden City.
Okay.
And that's, so I think if South Ogden City is stronger, I mean, that's the impression. I'm not saying that's my opinion, but.
Encourage them to incorporate into you into city. And there's no tax base there.
Yeah, they don't really like it either. So I think that's, I don't know, I can look into it.
So you either go one way or the other. You either join up and, and pay up or you join down and pay up.
Incorporate yourself in a small city, but.
I think South Ogden's getting out of it, but they, they've had some, some issues in the past. I think people are nervous to join in too.
Yeah, okay.
But I, I will do some research and see what I can.
Maybe it's just a statement in the plan, uh, a statement of encouragement, even if it doesn't mean anything or go anywhere. Um, I don't know. I mean, I mean, I know if I were to ask the majority, uh, out there, they'd say no, uh, we like being unincorporated. I just. If the county doesn't encourage incorporation or annexation, we will be a city. The county will be a city. We will have to have municipal services. I mean, there, there's. Yeah, the one acre lot is, uh, stimulating that by itself. Exactly. And so it, it'll just be a bigger and bigger problem.
Maybe just do that and then they're like, do I belong to the city or that city?
Excellent.
So a question on the island in Plain City, did you give everything to the south? Of center to the, you know, the south of Center Street that makes huge over there as well.
Yeah, yeah, mixed use residential, yep. And that's key, kind of keeping in with the, uh, idea of our one ten. Um, over in there. And smaller.
And that all still blends with, now on that side, that might be more toward far west or is that still considered more leaning toward plain?
That's all plain city. Plain city circles that on three sides.
Okay.
But if you look at the far west annexation. Declaration, it does show the south side going to far west.
J D R C, but if you go to the south side of the road there, that could go to far left. It doesn't touch far left.
Here?
That doesn't touch all of this right here, these plains.
That's curve and all that's.
So this is all plain city around this whole thing.
Yes.
Far west line right now, places right now. Okay.
Where's that?
So all that ground right there.
Interesting. Okay, so plain city.
But you just think these taxes in Mable County and then they're all going to be in the city.
Well, they're gonna have to, um, honestly, uh, and at, at some point in time, I mean, if. If it's, uh, what Salt Lake County did, they're just gonna create a municipal services.
For the county.
Everything. Yeah, in fact, their planning division is run by their municipal services department. Where the county has a municipal services tax here, um, we don't have, and I mean, most of our department is actually paid out of municipal services. Yeah, that's what it is. Sorry, municipal services district.
It's under its own governing body because it's its own district. It's not governed by that.
I think the council still governs that, but I do think it's a separate district. Which gives them a higher taxing ability as well.
We're border, we're borderline on needing to be a city. You're just not quite there yet.
Yep.
You're, you're, you're gonna have some awful high taxes for a while right now.
Well, Brandon, you wanna start? Sounds like you got a list.
Will you fix one of them? I'm okay with the other one. Well, first off, I just wanna clarify, Tom, you made a comment in the meeting yesterday and it says conservation easements. Are owned by the county for all open spaces on cluster subdivision.
Correct.
They are, they are deeded back to the county?
Yeah, so every single subdivision plat dedicates by the plat, the conservation easement to the county. So, yeah, all of.
So they don't own the ground, they own the easement.
Easement. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, sorry.
I had to put it, I missed.
Good question.
So, so the homeowners association owns the property.
Or the, or the, uh, original developer or the farmer they said sell it to. And that, that, that even goes back to the old cluster subdivisions as well.
But the easement just states that it has to stay open space.
Yep.
They can't go on.
County owns the open space. If you were to pull the abstract on that parcel, you would see that the county has a, an easement there.
Okay, we kind of had the discussion after the meeting a little bit yesterday, but when we kind of got into the, this. And we talked about agricultural law. I kind of have an issue calling a large lot and an agricultural.
That was one of mine. I would separate those because. They, they do need to be. At least for you into Highlands especially, we need to have one that just says half acre.
Smaller, okay.
Yeah.
Half acre up to, you know, two acres is a large lot and anything above two to five is your agricultural laws.
Okay.
Have to two.
I don't know, that's just.
Equals large. And that actually goes very well with, uh, the A three zone, which requires two acres for.
Yeah.
And then, um. Two and above.
I wanna see how our notes compare. So the next one's gonna be the purple down there on, in between the river and the. And I apologize, I wasn't here for that meeting and that, you know, you spilled me in a little bit.
Wait, which one?
The purple right here on fifty nine hundred west.
That, that didn't, that didn't come up in a meeting.
Find out about that one.
Okay.
So my only. I feel better about it today, the more I've thought about it, because at least it's on a corridor.
Right.
I mean, I still don't a hundred percent feel if it's the right place, because it's kind of right in the middle of everything.
Right.
But then the more I thought about it, I think, you know, you.
We need something in the middle.
Well, what do you see? You got houses and then you might get a little strip that's gonna be manufacturing, but it's, it's not a little, it's, it's a large portion. And then you're gonna go back into some residential. I, the more I've thought about it through the day, I, I'm not against that one.
Okay. So you have a non-comment on that?
Well, no. Poking, poking these lists.
No, I love it.
The other one off, I'm happy with it, so.
Well, thinking about that just a little bit, the difference in land use will create a division in those spaces, right? And the river by itself, I think, creates a mental division for a lot of people. Um, in fact, Commissioner Jenkins was like, everything river and east, let's color a certain color and the other side a different color. I think that, that idea has kind of waned a little bit, uh, on the other side, but, um. I think this will create distinctly different locations, right?
And my other concern that I had when I first seen it was, and, and I don't know if Lance is on here, but Lance has brought this up several times about. Being so close to the river and having that type of an industry close to the river. But, and, and I thought about that for quite a while, but then I thought about the old stockyards down there, what they've done on exchange. You know, how they've incorporated that and what they're doing to the river, enhancing the river and making it more. And you said this yesterday, Charlie. I mean, if we go to that, that's how we can maybe get some more out of that, as it develops into that type of a zone. Is to enhance some of the features along the river, so. The more, like I said, off the bat, I was totally against it. The more I've thought, the more input I've got, I, I don't mind that.
Okay. Light industrial is quite a bit different now than it was back in the day. I mean, back in the day, it was just. Well, any industrial was just floating anything it could be, and it always wanted to be next to a waterway because that was the easiest place to drink things, right? Yeah. And then you get, you know, Utah Lake, which was horrible for a very long time because of uses like Geneva Steel and, and whatnot. Fortunately for us now, some of those laws have gotten really tight, so.
Which, which one did he take off?
Oh, yeah, uh, greenhouses, uh, removed. Changes, thoughts, impressions?
I think that's, I, I couldn't support that. I mean, then it's just out in the, there's no connectivity to it. There's no. I mean, if, if it would have been up closer to where the eighteen hundreds gonna push through or something, and that all was gonna be a little commercial. Or industrial node there, it would be one thing, but. The way that's set is just the only slot there in the middle of all those homes. I, I just, I couldn't go for that.
And that doesn't mean that we have to tell, uh, Mr. Ropelato, no.
We're not gonna put it on the plan.
It just means that if you say yes, you're not going with what the plan says. And that's okay. I mean, if, if you were to create a development agreement that said this expires as soon as the land changes hands or something like that, we could certainly do that.
How do you go in and do that to, we just updated general plan. Commission's already said they're not gonna act on that until the. You know, planned up map, don't show it. I mean, how does it look on us as the job we've done? If we turn right around and we're doing a general plan amendment a month after we put it on there.
And that's why I think it should be on there. Because I do think that's potentials there. And the reason I think the potential there is because of Panaya. And, and so I'll, that's my thoughts, my feelings on it. I, I think it belongs there, uh, just for that reason, because you're not gonna push Panaya out now. Yes, they're happy to stay ag zoned, but at the same time, that kind of, that. That being where, being those two properties located the way they are in conjunction with each other. The only good way out of that for, for Randy, and there's more than one, but the, the best way out of that for him is if Pinaia would buy it from him. I don't know how that's working out. It's none of my business and we're not here to do business.
No.
We're here to take care of, of zoning. Given the fact that, that the Pinaia is already there and it is a quasi ag quasi commercial entity. I think the potential for it, the commercial exists, and I think it should be on the plan because. Who knows how long that's going to be there? It could be there for generations. So now, having said that. I, I hear the argument, I'm not deaf to the argument about the homes that, that are going in. But right now, the only homes that are going in there on the east side, and yes, it's zoned on all the other sides, on the north and the south. Uh, to be residential. But I think that it can still exist there, and I think that even if it only exists. For the Ropelato property is commercial, I think it can exist there with those homes. Under the code being that there, there's buildings. There's nice, instead of fences, there's nice walls that are put up. I'm not sure what that, you know, how that works for the potential purchaser there, but again, I'm not here to buy or sell Randy's property. But my, my thoughts go back to Pinaia being what Pinaia is, and I, and I think that, that. That leads to me to believe that that should be commercial.
So I think it contradicates a lot of what we've done with this plan. I mean, you look at where we put those type of. Entities or that type of a, of a zone. And you look at where it connects. I mean, it's got some type of a, you know, an access or a, you know.
Agree.
Not just a, you know, a twenty-four foot road that runs through there. We're looking at a, you know. There are some benefits from it, and I see that. I mean, because we can get some potential connectivity out of fifty-one hundred west, which is a benefit. But I just, when I see, you know, you look at this main road of nine hundred and eleven fifty, and then you put, when that purple dot was just over here in the middle of this yellow. I just couldn't, couldn't swallow it for that reason.
And that would, I'm sorry, and that would all be fine, and I agree with that, if we knew Pinaia was, was pulling up stakes and moving out tomorrow. But they're not, and we don't know when they will. So that entity exists and it's a large entity. It's two hundred acres plus. So that's why I feel, I feel it should be, it should be considered for commercial. Anyway.
My concern is here, we're, we're putting down the rule, not the exceptions. So I'm nervous about plotting on this map an exception. I, I would be open to the idea to doing something specifically for Mr. Ropelato that's only connected to exactly what he has planned. Um, the purchaser, um, said that if we put the road through, he's probably not gonna buy the land. Uh, so I don't wanna put a purple dot on this map based on Mr. Ropelato, and then all of a sudden we got someone else coming in and putting an island. Now the question of being built right next to the, um. Pinaia, it, you know, it, it, we have a lot of homes that go next to ag businesses and. I think it would be okay in the end to put homes through there if that's what it's done for. I mean, he has a, he has other options. For his land. So if he comes to us and that particular purchaser says, yes, we'll put the road through and we're okay there. I'm okay doing an exception to the rule. I'm really nervous putting an exception on a plan that's gonna be on a map that's gonna be used. For. Ten, twen- fifteen years, you know.
Still argue the fact that it's an exception, and the reason I say that is because that facility exists today. It's not an exception in my eyes.
So let me ask.
You'd want it to be commercial in perpetuity.
Yeah, well, possibly, possibly, but I, I lean more towards saying that whatever the potential is for that property, if, if it goes through. For the reasoning that, that he's asking for it to be rezoned. Then I would, I would be more than happy to say that there's a master agreement that says that at the end of. When it gets sold, that it goes back to the zoning that is around it.
I'm okay doing an exception for him based on this one concept, but I, my, I just am nervous about the island out there on the map in particular.
But what do you do with my name? It's not an island. It, or excuse me, it is an island.
Well, it, you know what? I don't know if they're in or out of compliance and apparently we can't or won't control that, and so. It is what it is.
It's an ag business.
And, and people out there living next to ag business, it's not pollu-, it's not a pollutant, I would assume. People live ne- next to businesses.
So let me ask you guys this question. Is the residential nature of that area appropriate? I mean, maybe it's not residential, maybe it's light manufacturing or.
That's why, that's why I was saying, let's extend this over a little bit on fifty-one hundred.
Okay, show me right here so I make sure. We're talking about this area right here.
Right, see where that floodplain kind of comes out right there? That's the base of Pinaia, which comes up like, kinda like that to.
It's like, right, okay. And we've already got this branch, so maybe we do a bigger, bigger light. Manufacturing instead of over here. What if it's over here? And that's our midpoint, you know?
Could do light manufacturing or we could do commercial of some sort. We can have, I mean, the, we've been trying to buffer things. So maybe we can, uh, have some kind of buffer that heads towards the river or reverse direction. You got eighteen hundred and you got fifty-one hundred. You got a potential fifty-five hundred, which. I don't know how realistic fifty-five hundred is gonna be in the future because you've got a lot of floodplain there. But, uh, let me take a.
So this area right here is all floodplain. So we've got a buffer right here. We've got a river right here. So this area right here could be. I'm nervous to make it commercial because we don't wanna get rid of the importance of the commercial here. But if it's some sort of like, you know, where we're doing warehouse or it, there is a, there is a, um. A good reason why we don't wanna have all the industrials so far away that. We're traveling so far to get to it.
True. So my thought is you, you've got a little bit of, uh, uh, mixed residential on eighteen hundred. Eighteen hundred doesn't have to be a mixed residential corridor. We could use that for something else. Or you keep mixed residential there and maybe behind the mixed residential, let's just get some different colors here.
Extend it to the river and then between the river and the floodplain and that mixed use is the. Is that the area you're talking about right there and have that all be the light industrial?
Kind of thinking right to that, that drainage, uh, that's there. Maybe something like that, light industrial.
Oh, there you are. Would you want to just continue both those all the way to the river? So there, the river is the buffer.
So the river itself, you've got floodplain there. I don't know if we wanna see a ton of. Oh, yeah.
You know what? I, I, I don't, I didn't necessarily envision it going that far west. I envisioned it kind of more of a strip between fifty-one and fifty-five over to, over to twelfth street.
So fifty-five is right here.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
It's okay. And you wanna see up to twelve?
Yeah, well, just, yeah, just kind of extend, extend what, what we were doing on twelfth street. The only thing is now I'm looking at this with the line, lines drawn on it. Yeah, how do you, how do you kind of?
It's, it's hard, right? Especially when we're looking at a spot, but it, it might be interesting to see some, maybe a industrial kind of run. Uh, light industrial running along the river, kind of tying up to that other industrial that we, we saw on the map up a little higher. Um, but that's a lot of area for light industrial. I mean, this is, this is a big amount of space.
That's a bigger area than.
Division now in your community by doing this, because you're putting that all in the middle.
At least some, you know, you got the residential and stuff here, they're still gonna tie it together. So then, so then why don't, why don't, doesn't it just stay, why isn't it, why can't it just be an island?
Yeah.
And I, and I get, I get the heartburn with that because I've got it too. But like I said, you've got a facility there that, that you're dealing with anyway, and it's not going anywhere. But like I said, you've got a facility there that, that you're dealing with anyway, and it's not going anywhere. And you've got some frontage in front of it toward a potential fifty-one hundred west street. Wayne, chime in here. What's your thoughts?
You know, my, my take on this is, is. Now, I guess I, I don't have a problem having a spot there. I've done it for kind of the same reasons. I mean, it's surrounded basically uh, with Pinaya. And I don't know whether that. Yeah, I. Yeah, I, I don't have any problem at all with it being there actually.
But if they put it on this map, then.
But I don't think we need to make a big area there. I mean, I'm not so sure I'm crazy about that. But that little spot right there.
Some yes, some no.
You know what? If this is hurting our heads too much, let's move on. We can come back to.
I think.
Cause I think Charlie's.
Charlie's just got it pulled up though.
Yeah, I've got it on the screen if you wanna look at it, but.
All right, so there's, there's Pinaya.
Right.
Now, now, okay, that's an agricultural, it's an agricultural operation. I'll give you that, but it's also a commercial operation. And I don't think that that can be denied. So now, as far as changing that to commercial and, and because of the fact that they're not asking for it. No, they need to be grandfathered as ag. But if you're gonna. I think, I think that it's potential for them to be commercial. However, leave them alone. Go back to what, maybe, maybe I'm seeing it more, more the way that, that Commissioner Wicker explained it. Maybe if they come in with the right proposal for that piece of property and its master agreement, the roads included, you know, there's some stuff that goes along with it. Um, and, and we just spot it for now. Maybe that's, maybe that's the better way to, to handle it. I don't know. It just, that, that right there that's gray or purple or whatever color. That just, that just to me, it's not.
Future color.
It's not, yeah, it's not going, it's not going anywhere. At least I don't anticipate that it's going anywhere. And, and I know that from time to time, we've seen expansion there because they present it to us.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And they do uh, medicinal marijuana and state code doesn't allow medicinal, medicinal marijuana to be grown within a certain proximity of a residential area. Now, that said, um, I don't know if they'd be grandfathered in. And so we, we, it, it, there may be a benefit to.
For them.
For, for, you're right, to surrounding this with something that's not residential.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I thought that, that when we went through that process on the code for them and, and basically approved. We didn't, for the medicinal marijuana, I thought that we, we cut that down to X amount of feet. It, a, a perimeter.
So um.
State code had a certain one that we had to make them in.
So there, there are three different thresholds. There's the um.
Oh, it was for the different growths, wasn't it?
Yeah, one is, one is a cultivation, one is the full blown.
So now, so now, what do they qualify in? Just the growth?
They're just growing.
Right.
Right, just greenhouses.
But, so they meet, they meet that, that code now with what they have.
Yeah, part of the, the challenge of, of their new uh, buildings that are going in here, they've gotta have these buildings in here. Because they need to free up some of the space over here because um, of, of the distance from residential that's going in.
It wouldn't surprise me at some point in time, and I guess that's probably why I keep pounding on this, is that that will have to be commercial for them.
Or.
To meet, to meet state code.
They sell, make it residential and move it somewhere where they're not having so much conflict. I mean, if the land is more valuable in a different state than they're using it, then.
And they did that once.
And that's why they, they did, they did do that, but from Caseville.
Yeah, and they might have to move again, and so I, where they're not really, really.
I think this is much larger than it was in Caseville, and, and because of the fact that they keep adding on to it, that, that's more of an indicator to me that they're not going anywhere.
Yeah.
Plus, it, it seems like in Caseville is, is they were getting encroached upon by lots of development around there. That's why they decided to come up here and chose that spot. And uh, you know, my feeling is, is. Pinaya will probably be longer, there longer than if we give Randy a seat. Because things move, things get built out, the, the people that's in there. Uh, have a contract in Southern Utah, they may pick up, never come back. And so if something like that, then I think that uh. We oughta maybe have it revert back to the code.
Right, back to what's around it.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
So he's a reversionary zoning. And that's, um, if we were to, to do a spot zone here, I would, I would suggest we do it with reversionary zoning.
We did that with that overlay on the, on the uh, solar panels.
Yep, that's right.
So that means our plan stays as is, and then we address Mr. Ropelato as uh, individual.
Yep. So, so basically, when you're looking at that, your findings will be, even though it doesn't comply with the general plan. We do find that there's a public benefit to having this here for X, Y, Z. What's the public benefit? So, and then you would forward that positive recommendation out of the county commission.
What is the public benefit?
We'll get that row.
The row? That's good, that's a good benefit. And you could, again, it just has to meet uh, a reasonable public interest. Uh, Centilla, I think, is what Liam said.
I mean, I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it helps.
Yeah, well, it's gonna be really hard for him to pay for that road to go in there if we're talking about four houses, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Cool. Well, now that we got that reason taken care of, let's do a general plan. Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's over. I got the bad feeling.
And honestly, I, I've talked to, I've spoken with all three commissioners and I don't, I don't have a good sense it's gonna be approved. I also don't have a good sense it's gonna be denied. So I know that there's one commissioner who really doesn't want it there. I know there's one commissioner who, and then there's one commissioner who is probably gonna have to swing, but we'll see what happens. Okay.
Eighteen hundred south. Why do we got that big hooey in it? I thought we liked straight roads and they were on quarter section and section lines and stuff like that.
You mean curving up, then curving back down again? Trying to avoid the floodplain. So we don't have to. Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to get to the, the northernmost part of that floodplain. We're still gonna have to go through it, but it's not gonna be as costly.
I know. Someday we'll get moisture.
I mean, it's probably gonna be after we all die, dinosaurs come back. And I, I agree, but it'll happen.
What a, okay, I, I can live with that. I just, it, it just.
I do, we do like straight roads.
More sense to me, especially with landowners and everything else you got out there, if they run down section lines instead of.
Yep.
And, and. And maybe it's when you get closer to the floodplain, you push it out a little bit, but.
Well, and not only that, not only everything that you've said, but also because of the proximity of railroad tracks. You have a little bit more space.
Then we don't have that same issue as we got on the other side as well.
So that, that was actually the, the developer that's on the uh, west side was saying the opposite. And it's not the proximity to the tracks. He doesn't wanna be close to the tracks, but if you look at both sides of that, if you. Uh, from the tracks down to where the floodplain is again on the south side of their commercial core on the, where that will be. If you have a, a approximately an equal amount on both sides, you've got a road that is centrally, centrally located. And so you get a better uh, ability to get access to it. So you've got, now that it's upside down.
The floodplain will stop development on the other sides, everything.
Yeah, so the flood, the floodplains down here, then you got your tracks up here. They, it, it's best for them to have this run right through the middle. Because they could get big box in a reasonable amount of acreage here. They could get downtown in a reasonable amount of acreage here, and then they could tie the two together. So i- in reality, the proximity here, we're, we are looking at how close it is, but the acreage wise, that's, that's quite a bit.
And they're participating on the road build?
Yes, yes, they're participating on the road build, and as is, they're, they're gonna do um. With this development out here, they're likely to do a PID, uh, Public Improvement District, public.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure district, thank you. So that, basically what that means is they're, they're gonna tax themselves up to one and a half percent in order to pay for that. So it's like a special assessment area.
So in other words, then if you build the road, you can put it where you wanna.
Yeah, kinda. Yeah, kinda. I mean, we're the ones who are saying we don't want that going through the floodplain. Uh, well, we, our engineering division is.
Makes, makes sense. Okay, thirty-six hundred. I liked it. Jill brought up a really good comment when she said push that road further to the river.
You missed the compromise.
Oh.
That happened in the meeting last month, a week ago, Monday.
So um, we pushing it closer to the river. Uh, we did talk to the county engineers about that again. So one of the reasons why it wasn't showing up close to the river is cause I had already tried to take this battle. The county engineers, they said.
I'll battle with Gary.
They said the same thing that I just mentioned on um, eighteen hundred and sixteen hundred swooping. Um, having a, a, a approximately equal amount of land on both sides makes that road more centrally located. So if it's gonna be a community. What are we calling that? A major collector? It's better to have a, a approximately equal amount of side, uh, uh, of space on each side. So you get the same amount of homes that are coming to a central location. So thirty.
Still doesn't make it equal.
But no, no, looking at the difference between, you've got forty-seven and then a future forty-three or forty-one. And then thirty-six. And so there is another road that's in there. And so just kinda trying to get a, a, an equal amount. Um, the other thing was uh, as I mentioned before. Uh, putting it on thirty-six, you've already got the infrastructure there, so that may be the path of least resistance. Even though we know if we go to a hundred foot wide right away, there are homes that we're dealing with. Yeah, at the very least, we're taking front yards.
But.
All the way.
Jill was okay with this, dude, by the way.
Yeah, um, cause the other alternative that we came up with, that the engineering division actually thought was a great idea, was, well, what about thirty-seven or thirty-eight? So why don't we go further west? They'd be more comfortable with that. Um, but now you're going through land that a road has never been through. And so in, in chatting with Jill about that a little bit, she said, you know what? That doesn't make any sense. If, if, if that's the option, uh, alternative, let's just stick on thirty-six hundred. It's already there. So I would love to see it go closer to the river, frankly. Um, I think we've kinda missed the boat on getting that. Fronted or that, that uh, going through Riverbend. Uh, yeah, and so that's only sixty-six foot wide where we would need eighty. On this. So either way, we're taking somebody's front yard. Granted, we'd have to hand them a check for. A front yard that doesn't exist as opposed to taking someone's actual house, but. Anyway, yeah. It's kind of the, the compromise that was, that was stricken there.
I don't know, I still, that's, I'd rather shit go through virgin ground, especially be a major collector.
But further east or further west?
Well, I mean, I, I kind of agree with what engineering's saying. Let's push it further west and put it at thirty-eight. And bring it over, and you still, I mean, you're still gonna have to make that kind of a bend in it to get over here, cause eventually you wanna turn in, turn it into thirty-six hundred over here.
Pine City, yeah.
To tie that all together. But I mean, I would, it's already a narrow road, yeah, there's sewer in it, but I mean, you can build infrastructure, I mean. And if it's a main collector, it's honestly in. The counties or the municipalities can own it, best interest not to have those utilities in it.
True.
Keep them on the side roads and bring them up another way and not have utilities run down.
So I'll show you what that looks like. Oh, I forgot, these are very big and it's gonna take, anyway. Um, so the idea, if we did thirty-seven or thirty-eight was to. Uh, go from thirty-five uh, across the track and then swing very quickly and go even further than where thirty-six hundred connects in. Go through Ed Gramps' Riverbend's open space on the eastern side, which is on the other side of the road. So go through the uh, oh, sorry, western side. Go through the westernmost side of that open space. So you're missing where the reservoir's gonna go. And then just follow that line up, and you're almost a straight shot. There's another canal or ditch that you're following and doing so.
Yeah.
Um, and then connect back over the river and go back down again. Engineering was fine with that. Jill thought that it was a little bit of a silly idea because now you are going through virgin ground where, you know, would have made more sense closer to the river.
But that virgin ground on the, I mean, this road ain't gonna get built, but virgin ground develops.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What happened?
I, I didn't say that.
I just, I think to go back to the standpoint of, you know, you want it centrally, that's gonna be more sensible to me between forty-seven, which is gonna be a main corridor. And the river, you're kinda splitting it in the middle. I would much rather, I just, I, I can't wrap my head around. The little curvy road of thirty-six hundred and making that a, a main corridor.
We have to change.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to change.
Well, it is, it is changing with uh, I mean, Brad Blanch can't do that development without that being uh, updated. So he's gonna be fronting the dollars on that, and he's gonna have a pioneering agreement, I think, with the county. But we've already started taking land um, to.
On the, on the one end, but that's still, you've got a huge second section in the middle that isn't touched.
Good point.
Several, well, at least over a mile between nine hundred and four hundred that.
Yeah.
How many homes and are they, are they large homes? Are they older homes?
There are a lot of large, a lot of older homes through there.
Yep.
There's a lot of them.
A lot of historical, you know, that's been out there for a long time and I.
Well, historical or rundown, there's.
No.
I'm like, are they going to be happy that they have something else to do with them? They're really well taken care of.
But.
I, I don't know, cause we have some parts, you can, you went to islands that.
There's a dirt road that runs further west, that runs more.
Technically Brad went to the emergency access road.
Technically.
Well, that's kind of the same. I think that's the alignment that Charlie kinda got there. Of that, they would follow that alignment, cause that's where that drainage goes out as well, that's mapped there.
Yeah.
That's, that's right. So, I mean, if you guys wanna take a little pill trip, uh, let's go there.
So you cut it through Jed's front yard?
No, you would.
Jed's on the other side.
Jed would be, it would've went through Jed's front yard the first way if we went closer to the river. Now we're saying let's go further west. And run through all that open property.
What is that road that comes across to the gravel road?
Well, forty-three's up.
It's.
The one way, but there's, there's a private road that's back there that.
You see on the map right here?
Runs right through.
Yes.
Wagstaffs.
So right here, um, there's a, can you see where I'm? See if I can grab a guy and, come on, guy.
I'll be your guy, Charlie. Where are we going?
What? Well, why not, why not just take it right down to forty-three and go across?
Cause then you're too close to forty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the same thing back and forth.
Yeah.
Oh, here's my mouse. Great. So this uh, blue line right here, that's uh, essentially a, a irrigation ditch of, of some sort or a drainage of some sort. Uh, so the line that I, the red line that I just drew right here would have followed that. Let me turn the aerials on so you can see where we are. So here's thirty-six. Coming up here.
Good.
Here's where that drainage facility is here.
That, that, they're, they're on, on, there's, it's not, it's uh. Yeah, it's wagstaffs. That lane take you back to wagstaff.
Oh, thirty-six is uh. So unused that Google hasn't even driven down it yet. I guess we can't go on a pill trip.
Wait, man, I thought we were really going somewhere.
Some caffeine. Okay. You gonna go have an adventure at Maverick?
This time of night, I wouldn't recommend one. That's even worse.
Like as, have, have a night, well, as the night goes on, decorum drops, especially mine. Uh, anything else on your list?
No.
You make it, make it hard on me, come on.
We could go to someone else's or else we can start going through their comments.
Well, that's, that's where, that's where I'm at, is to comment. So unless anybody else has anything else before the comments. I'm gonna say no, so.
I think we've addressed Jill's comment.
Yeah.
With the lot sizes going down there. I think that one's done.
Yeah.
I think we've addressed Mr. Hammer's comment.
Yep.
From what I wrote down.
Yep, I've got it, but on the screen right here too.
I think we've addressed Mr. Hipwell's comment, other than the water. But I, I think this is a. I had this discussion today with, with our water manager out there. For the corner, people are confusing culinary in second.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are. There is plenty of culinary water for this area.
Yeah.
There, there's not a problem with culinary water. We just did the impact fee study for the area. I mean, Taylor West Weaver alone had eleven hundred. Connections in excess that they could buy into capacity.
Okay.
Into the system. So culinary water isn't the big thing out there. It's the enough secondary.
Yeah.
But how we fix that is we've gotta be more into that zero scape in. You know, Hooper's gotta, Hooper's gotta change their ways a little bit and quit saying, I need a half a share for.
Yeah.
Every lot that's going in. You gotta look at what you're gonna put in there, and if you put a restriction that. You can't have a front yard, it's all about to be zero scape, and you can only have a certain amount of, you know, grass in a backyard that requires water. And you can only have a certain amount of, you know, grass in a backyard that requires water.
Yep.
That's how we're going to overcome the the water issue.
Do they meter the secondary water?
It has to be now.
And are we charging for excess? Like, I know they are. I think that's the only thing that's going to check.
I don't think Hooper's doing anything down there. I don't know.
They're not doing it up where I am, but really, we don't have to do anything but charge for the excess. And then all of a sudden, people are done.
Well, the new stuff.
That's absolutely, everyone thinks that their thirty dollars that they paid to the city pays for unlimited amount of secondary water. And once they have to pay for what they're using beyond what they really paid for.
Weaver Basin, since they've been putting their meters in, they're starting to understand. People are starting to learn when they see how much they're using.
Yeah.
That's making them concerned and then.
Because otherwise, like, I'm not fixing my speakers, it doesn't cost too much. But then, oh, I I lived in California, I had some water bills that I could not believe. Actually, one of them was not mine. That's why I could not believe that. I don't think I spent two thousand dollars on water.
Did I just hear you're one of those Californians? Is that what I just heard?
I've lived there, but.
Okay, okay.
She left and then realized.
But, yeah, the. I think, I think there is, and I'm glad you brought that up because there is a big misconception about that. So and then, and then um. You know, we heard from from Mr. Hipwell and several of the other people after him that. As they went through the lot sizes, they kept getting bigger. And so, and I've got the notes written down. It started out as a third quarters were too small. But then we went from the third being okay, as as I wrote down preferred, and then we went to half. So it it's, that's why I go to the point where I'm saying, I wish we'd have had more of a sampling from the public. Because the sampling that we had just really doesn't, doesn't give me a a a lot to to go with here.
Well, we don't have enough money from farming to sub- to substantiate farming instead of residential. And if we don't make the lot sizes small enough, they're not going to set, get enough money from selling the farm. To stop using all the water.
Right.
Yeah.
It'd be nice if everyone, we said, okay, let's just put all the farming together and I like actual usable big plots and let's, let's, let's run. Plumbing, you know, let's let's rake it all and let's get, let's get some, let's get some real product out of these.
You know, if you do it in a big enough scale, you're not going to have locals running that farm at all. It's going to be big farm, big farm coming in.
Yeah.
Mr. Hipwell made another comment that I didn't a hundred percent agree with. It's a smaller lot to create additional burden on the roads. It does to a point, but it's also you make a smaller lot, then more people are paying for that frontage.
Right.
So as long as you have the collectors, like the plan shows, I think the plan. Accommodate.
So so his, what I heard was a little bit different. Um, the the wider and shallower lots mean that you're going to have more roads, which I do agree with.
You mean, so if we have a wider frontage?
Wider frontage, shallower, shallower lots, sorry, shower, whatever it is.
You were talking about how it could be a frontage for all of them, no matter how. Interpreted what we were doing and you went to Highlands and assumed that was applying to all of West Weaver. And it it's not. It's a a small section if you went to Highlands where we're keeping the frontage the same because of the existing road structure.
Yeah, and he's, he's not wrong. Uh, it.
It varies by zone.
It will, yeah.
Oh, it will.
Yeah, and out here, it it really depends on if we'll go with a RE fifteen, I believe it's eighty feet of frontage right now.
Let's put a decent sized home on that. You've got to to meet your setbacks.
Right.
Or else everything's just, then then you're building up instead of so much as building out. And I don't know if that's something that we want to drive around and. See a bunch of three story homes because you can't, you know, we we put the frontage so small that their only choice is to go off.
At at some point in time, that's going to be the only choice for anyone, but. We don't have to deal with that.
But I just don't think it'll, it it's not the fit that we want in a mixed use area.
Yeah.
Area that's on or that's plotted that way. I could see it there.
That's right.
But in these yellow areas, it's just, it doesn't keep that.
Well, thirty five feet is the top.
Max right now.
Max right now, yeah.
Thirty five.
All right. Well, I think we've covered that one. Then uh, Mr. Burns was the next person and I think we've covered that. And then Miss Hammer. Um, and I think we've covered both of her issues unless there's more since you're here.
Yeah, take the benefit of beating her.
Yeah, yeah. So if there's more, if there's something else you wanted to add to to what you said yesterday, please.
What kind of commercial would it be? Makes, I mean, just to find that up close of that property.
Have you seen the um? In in Ogden, the area that's by the river where they have um, by the bike shop and running store and meters. Have you been around there?
No.
Do you do the River Park Trail there? So um, not all of that, because they do have some that's drive up. But it would be. So right there, we're saying it has to be storefronts can be on the bottom. So it'd be kind of like twenty fifth street style, but smaller scale.
Or right here in, on the junction, you go through the junction right there where you.
That would be better.
And then you've got housing above it, essentially. That little road right here, they built through the junction that you can come off twenty fifth and go over towards like cats.
Ice cream shop, big potato shop, like small restaurants and like real estate offices, like small offices. Small restaurants, so small commercial with um housing above it. So it it, that has a smaller scale than twenty fifth street. Twenty fifth street was built bigger. That way I would expect it would be the smaller scale.
I think you'd see a lot of what we see right here on the other side of this road of of from the county building of where you've got, you know, some restaurants.
Oh, yeah, I forget, we're right here.
That, you know, the restaurants, the, you know, some walk up businesses that are along there. And then as it grows back, that's where. I envision of being that right there.
I don't know. But I'm, I'm, I'm curious, especially if we only keep it a strip along the frontage. Um, that's the kind of building that you you might see there. And it's not, don't look at all the buildings behind. That's, there's not a ton of depth to that. Mixed use uh village area.
So that is a good question. Is it worth putting the strip in there or do we just keep that mixed use residential? Is it? Well, so the benefit was if we put the mixed use residential, it's too far to walk to get to the next services. And so if there are some services there, then that's where Wayne can go get his um.
Yeah, a while.
And like a small cafe, so small businesses would be allowed to be there to support those living in the higher. So just anyone close to there because it's too far to walk to get to the next.
And that's, that was, he's, he needs book traffic. That's how he's arrived. And that's, it actually really does.
And will they come? I don't know. Did I, would I have ever thought that the one right there on thirty three and thirty five would have filled up as quick as it did? Never would have guessed. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it it's, it really, I think you're seeing more and more as we grow out there.
Yeah.
No one's wanting to drive to South Ogden and go to the dentist anymore.
Right.
They want to drive out there.
Exactly.
I love that they're all right by me.
Those type of amenities, whether it's hairdressers or a real estate office or. All that stuff that's going to come out that way. I mean, that's probably where some of that's going to end up right now. Which probably isn't the best intent for that commercial that we would like to see to get the economic benefit coming back into the county. But. I think that's what we're going to see there.
Dude, their walking path is by them. There'll be a walking trail.
On the river?
On the river.
The the plan that they currently have, there's a walking path that sur- circles the entire development.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because so that's why I was thinking about meters and those shops there is that we stopped there a lot because we're just biking around. Like, oh, we want some food. Oh, let's go look at some shoes. Let's go to gear thirty. This is fun.
Fun that you can't afford.
Yeah, I know.
Good example because of the fact that I I think I find myself getting tired of being in traffic. You know, so if there, I've said the same thing. If there was a dentist office that, you know, was over on four thousand on fifty one hundred where those offices are. I'd be their first patient because it's like, I don't want to have to deal with going to South Ogden. That's normally where you have to go.
Right.
So.
Yeah, my wife was about rich cream today. She ran the taxes up to South Ogden and driving home, she had every red light and she would just prostrate it.
Yeah.
If there was someone out there, you know, it's.
Yeah, and and that that example of thirty three and thirty five is is, I would have never thought that that would have built in. And they also doubled its size. Yeah.
And they had the potential to build three more of them right there.
Yeah.
How would you feel about differences like that right there?
The part that makes me concerned is how they're going to get in and out of there.
Oh, the accent.
Twelve Street or you're going to have to come up through the residential area.
They're going to have to have multiple accesses. There, there's no way that the, that they could build that and just have accesses come on to twenty seven hundred.
So maybe.
But that's, that's not a problem that, I mean, that's a UDOT to decide.
They've already got it. They've got a approved access. So that was one of the questions that Commissioner Faur had, so I contacted you dot, you dot said, why are we still talking about this? I thought we could resolve this a year ago. I was like, I didn't know.
But.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, what else we have? Comments?
I don't think that the Ryan Ellis's comments, I mean, I don't, I don't know where that one really pertained to.
Nope.
Mr. Heslop's comment, I think we've addressed that through the parks and what we've kind of talked about is we get into those smaller. Smaller lot, higher densities is where it goes into the park space. I think.
Yep.
And Mr. Coddles, I think is the same way. I think it's been addressed.
Yeah.
For the eight comments that we got on this whole general.
Yeah, and 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 I hope that no one takes it the wrong way. I really appreciate the people that showed up. I just wish that they could have brought a lot more people with them. I know, I'm, I'm not pointing a finger at you. I'm just.
We're saying thank you for coming.
Yes, for sure.
It's frustrating for us when we're asking for public input and we're not getting it.
So, yeah, we're the bad guys because we're the ones that approve that subdivision because they're meeting what the code says.
Yeah.
That's where it gets hard.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Just to clarify the case, I understood, right? My, when we were talking about this mixed use residential going down along twelve street.
Uh huh.
Okay. Did I hear right that it was generally extended to a two block?
Uh, no.
It was one to two block wide, depending what you thought.
Way further down, further west. It was going to go fur- it was going to go further north.
As the, as it gets room between twelfth street and the tracks is where that, where my intent was with that is to fill that area in. Because you kind of got that gap between eleven fifty and the tracks, but up on the east end though.
No.
So, but coming from an area where they have two blocks of that, that wideness, that's what creates the most. Because then they can wrap it really, really pretty. So if it's too narrow, they have.
Twelve Street.
Yeah.
And only a narrow strip.
Down.
And you've got canal.
Down where you guys are, yeah.
Oh, where you guys are.
Yeah.
If it's two blocks, is it a city block or?
City blocks or one city block.
Right, no, six hundred feet times two, so twelve hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's six, the city block is six hundred.
Yeah.
It's not quite a quarter of a mile.
And it's aware it's more narrow, we probably see more road houses or even just smaller lots in general.
Right, so let's, let's look at that right here.
That's not it.
So all the way along the railroad track until you get to this spot right here, there is no space between.
Right.
There's just, there's just no land there. Like, there's no private land. Railroad and then, yeah, and then the road commission.
Mm hmm.
So, once you get to right here, that's the first spot where you start getting private ownership.
Mm hmm.
And then that extends and then widens up.
And that's at forty three.
Yep, that's, that's forty three.
Why is the yellow so, so small around that? This one right here, I guess.
The same thing there. I thought we were pushing that.
Push that all the way.
All the way to the canal.
The canal and around.
On forty seven.
Yeah, this, that chunk right there.
Yeah, we were going all the way out the canal right there.
Might have accidentally deleted a layer. Let me. Um, and then how far?
With residential.
With the.
Residential, I think it could fill in that whole little area. And if they want to do house, then they just go either way. But.
So around the school and everything?
I think so. What do you guys think? Is there anything, what is there? I, you guys know what's there.
Well, having mixed use residential, a little bit more density around the school, I think is a good idea, especially if it's an elementary school where you've got kids walking.
Yeah, well, and and what is, what is Blanch's subdivision on on forty seven hundred considered? That's kind of a.
PRUD.
PRUD.
Yeah, but they've got very small lots in there as well.
So that's what I mean. It might be a good blend.
They might just do, yeah, some small lots.
But.
More is that too much? I'm concerned with the, with the, I would rather see. Them come in and, I guess, either way they're coming and ask for, but that mixed use, I think, I think you're getting a lot right there.
On forty seven.
Well, with just, I mean, because that commercial that's, you know, mixed use commercial could potentially be that.
Right, more housing.
Red doesn't mean it's got to be.
Oh, right, right, you're right.
So I think you've got, you've got a lot of area there.
Yeah.
So maybe just take it, that little weird sliver on the side, just maybe get rid of that.
Push that to the canal, I thought.
Forty seven?
That one's.
It makes use residential, so it kind of feathers out.
Okay. And then if someone came in with a good plan right there, that would.
Couldn't not do it right there if they come in and.
And then, and then I thought we came a little bit further on the south side too. But maybe this, maybe this is where we got to, but it seemed like. Oh, on the south side of the track.
I did pull that down.
Okay.
Yeah, that, um, I didn't pull it really far down.
No, okay, no.
Is it used to be in line with where that commercial started basically?
Okay.
All right.
I I gotta be honest with you, um. This is a huge, this whole area is a huge amount of area. So just. An observation, when we're talking about hitting every red light on the way home, um, and and whatnot. My, my, my dad and my stepmom are in West Valley and there was just nothing usable in West. And they're almost as far west as. Uh, as you can get at West Valley, but nothing usable as far as commercial types of opportunities, jobs and everything like that. You just had to leave. Unless you were doing some manufacturing over in some of the industrial areas. Um, and eighteen years old, driving across town to Stave Street, you hit rush hour traffic. Especially as the sun is coming right down to that corridor and every red light. I just, I don't know how anybody lives like that. Now fortunately, what what uh, West Valley has been doing in in time is they've been retrofitting. Um, a lot of their areas for commercial core, they've got a track line going to come in, all of that, all that kind of stuff. Reason I bring that up is that this is a ton more land than West Valley City even. Um, so think about all of these residences. Um, at some point in time, we're going to want to come back and readdress maybe on a small uh, village or.
Small.
Or small area plan and add more kinds of uh, re- uh, commercial opportunities.
But the idea right now is.
Along that corridor.
Commercial not come until the rooftops are here.
Yeah, right. And that's not the thought that I had in this little quadrant that we're looking at here. Um. It almost seems to me beneficial to bring that all the way down to eighteen hundred. So that the whole little triangle between forty seven hundred, eighteen hundred, just looking at all that for mixed use residential.
That's a lot of area.
That's true.
It is a lot of area.
I think I'd wait and.
To see how it develops.
See how it develops, yeah.
Fair enough, and then come back and readdress the plan. As long as we know the plan is not the forever plan.
No.
Like, this is a few years and then readdress.
Branding more density, that's what we look at. We're like, oh, it's close to, you know, it's in an area where it's closer to traffic, closer, closer to amenities. It makes more sense.
Perfect, okay, that's okay.
When they have the option, even with where it is, and we bring in a master plan developer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they can put enough ground together right there, they could do something like that and and I could see it. But right now, I think it's.
So premature.
And and we got to remember, kind of, I can't remember, you know, Becky said it, you know, we, we, we don't want to do a bait and switch here right at the end.
Right, uh, that's true. Yeah, there's probably not a lot of people who follow that.
And and the same philosophy kind of for the um, higher density housing. And the commercial, you know, we wanna kind of force that higher density housing first, closest to. Yeah, and fill that up first.
Primary reason I I bring up the concern is the commercial areas that we have here. I just, there's. It's, that's a lot of acreage.
No.
Um, and without the rooftops, it's just not gonna happen. But but.
Yeah.
Let's see how uh, how it evolves.
See what people come, bring us.
Okay, well, we've got half an hour until we're supposed to be done. Um, we can go through and start bullet pointing things that you guys think you wanna see. Or give me, let me take a stab at modifying the maps and hitting on the subjects that we got here and coming back next week. Do you guys wanna do that?
I'd like to do that. How do you guys? I will, as long as people, as long as we can do it on Wednesday.
Um, hopefully, I, if I'm not here, because you guys, you guys are more important. I think we've, we've gone to Highlands for this area.
Geez, thanks.
You guys are more important than me on this one. I'm just.
At least when you're out having fun, right?
Right, if I'm scared and I'm not.
So the sixteenth?
Yes.
Four of you?
Oh, maybe. I have some stuff and.
Okay.
I gotta find out about.
Well, do we have to have a call for the work session?
We do, if it's gonna be a public meeting and wow, I I think we should. Just because this is getting really close to making a decision.
That's when we can, we'll drag Uncle Jed here. All right.
Next week, five o'clock?
Yeah, should be good.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks, guys.
Oh, you got name?
I mean, I hope everybody was good.